Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. It's June 6. Audience in the room, I apologize for our delay. We had more in closed session to deal with that had to happen before we came in here. So please accept our apologies for your wait. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and eternal.
Okay, well quickly take attendance. Jessie, could you start?
Oh, does Anya start?
Oh, I did it again. I need to look a little further over. Anya, please start.
Hi, everyone. Anya Iopin, Student Board Member.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jessie Van Zee. I'm a trustee for Area 1.
Thanks for coming out, everyone. Good evening. I'm Susanna Ordway and I'm trustee for Area 4.
Good evening, everybody. Shelley Clark, representing Area 2.
Hi, I'm Laura Brat and I'm representing Area 3.
And Rachel Hurd, representing Area 5. Okay, let's start with our student recognition. We are going to go school and team by team, okay? I probably, well, I'll do the very first group and then we'll get up and then Logan, if you can help me with the mic like you have been. So this month, we are recognizing the tremendous achievements of our high school's spring sports teams and student athletes. We're so proud of the accomplishments of all students who participate in sports. The teams and individuals that we are highlighting tonight participated at the highest possible competition level in their respective sports. We are also very grateful to their coaches for mentoring these athletes to be the very best that they can be. This time, I'm going to call them up school by school and sport. We've invited individual athletes and/or the team captains. Many of the students being recognized tonight are not able to join us as they have end of the year banquets or senior trips, but we will still announce their names. And if their coaches are here, would they please come up and join us as well? So first, from California High School's track and field team, they cannot attend because of their banquet tonight. But we have Rachel Osika, who competed in the high jump at the CIF state meet, and her coach is Mark Carbo. Let's applaud for them. Also from California High School, swimming and diving this time, these seniors competed at the CIF meet. Alex DeWes, Charlotte Seven, Owen Berry, and Coach Thomas Pearson. And so Board, if you could come join us. Hey, another team from California High School, it's the stunt team, which won E-ball and NCS. And NCS, for those who don't know, is North Coast section, and they took second place at CIF. First, we have McKenna Carter, Madison Gregerson, Brooklyn Gannett, or Gant, sorry, Marissa Aralano, Ophelia Silva, Addison Crawford, and coaches Bianca Lucatero, Shayna Danielson, and Nikki Lucatera. We have amazing athletes in our district. Also from California High School's softball team, which won NCS and made it to CIF, made it to the CIF tournament. We have Alyssa Vilvardi, Caitlin Lay, Haley King, No-Lani King, Mia Rabuko, and coaches Tony Bari and Sean Ching. From Dougherty Valley High School's batmitten team, the boys' doubles team made it to the consolation final match of CIF. We have Cameron Hussein and Justin Khan and Coach Danny Su. From Dougherty Valley High School, an athlete who placed in the finals for the 100-yard butterfly, sorry, swimming and diving, Tim Wu and Coach Cindy Oji. Now from Mona Vista High School's track and field team, Mona Vista sent several athletes to CIF on relay teams, and these two runners competed in individual events. Ethan Miller and Kate Peters and Coach Patrick Wales Dinan. From Mona Vista High School's swimming and diving team, we're proud of this Mona Vista team who sent many athletes to CIF this year. Representing the team are Greta Callison, Trevor Bouche, and Nick Vonderay, and Coach Alex Woodruff and Lauren Braswell. Now we have San Ramon Valley High School, the women's lacrosse team took home the North Coast section championship this year. Unfortunately, the team captains are unable to be with us tonight, but I will happily still announce their names. Marin Run, Bryn Lee Myers, Carly Vomond, and Coach Bill Forrester and Assistant Coach Mike Iorio. More from San Ramon Valley High School, this time their softball team. They played in the CIF championship final game this year. Representing the team are Sam Shaw, Paige Leoid, Sophia Boucher, and Coach Lori Smith. San Ramon Valley's swimming and diving team, SRV sent some strong swimmers to CIF this year as well as a diver who's with us tonight, Emily Witneck and Coach Eric Polsmeyer and Heather Johnson. And last but not least, this year, San Ramon Valley High School's track and field team had a pole vaulter qualify for CIF. That's Derek Lowe and Coach Tracy McMullin. We're proud of all of our SRV USD athletes who played a spring sport, in particular our seniors. We wish you all the best. Thank you. Okay, getting back to our business, we need to report the actions from closed session. And so at this evening's closed session, the board approved the following administrative appointments effective July 1, 23. Oriana Yanes will be an assistant principal at California High School. Tiffany Zamet, assistant principal at California High School. Adria Ibartha will be an assistant principal at Charlotte Wood Middle School. Annabelle Earl Burp will be Director One Instructional Services for Elementary. And Sue Ellen Thomas, Assistant Principal of Athletics at Dougherty Valley High School. So let's congratulate them. Are any of those folks in the room? No? Okay. Also, the board authorized the district to settle a student matter with the student's family unanimously, 5-0 vote. Okay, so that's that. Now we're on 8.0 acceptance of minutes. Yeah, so can we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 16?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 16.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
The motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call, vote. Student Board Member Iopin.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
We also have minutes of the workshop special meeting on May 22.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Clark. Student Board Member Iopin was not present this that day. Oh, tongue tied. Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
And finally, minutes of a special board meeting on May 30.
Make a motion to accept these minutes from special meeting on May 30.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Board Member Van Zee and seconded by Board Member Brat. Roll call, vote. Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, and Student Board Member Iopin was not present that day.
Okay. 9.0, agenda approval and consent agenda. First, can I have a motion to accept the ocean open session agenda? And note that 11.8 has a revision.
I'll make the motion for our agenda with the amendments.
And I'll second it. The motion was made by Board Member Ordway and seconded by Board Member Brat. Roll call, vote. Student Board Member Iopin.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Okay, that brings us to consent. Note that 12.2 has a revision. And for the benefit of the audience, the consent agenda is where we put many items that are deemed routine in nature, them all together and vote on them as one item. Any board member may ask for something to be pulled separately. And I need to check cards here. We're good. So.
Can I ask a question on what was revised?
Yes.
Yes, it's on the consideration of approval of classified personnel changes. It's in front of you as a revised, and it's under the separation about three quarters of the way down. You see it underlined.
It's bolded and.
Okay, all right, all right, perfect. Thank you.
So do we have a motion to approve consent?
Motion to approve consent.
Thank you.
I'll second.
The board, the motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Brat. Roll call, vote. Student Board Member Iopin.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, reports to the board. The first one is a presentation on the SRV USD learner profile. And I'd like to invite Executive Director Debbie Pettish to tell us about this.
Good evening, President Hurd, fellow members of the board, and distinguished members of cabinet. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the newly developed learner profile for SRV USD. Tonight, I will be sharing with you the culmination of our efforts, a profile that represents our vision for the future of education in SRV USD. So first off, what really is a learner profile? Sometimes you may hear it also referred to as a graduate profile, profile of a learner. The terms are somewhat interchangeable. It essentially serves as a representation of the desired characteristics and abilities we strive to nurture in our students upon graduation. It acts as kind of a compass, guiding our educational practices towards fostering development and growth of our students. By recognizing the significance of not only the academic achievement of our kids, but also the essential life skills, the learner profile aims to equip students with the tools necessary to be successful, not only in school, but also in their post-high school endeavors. So over the course of several design team meetings, and you can see there, we kicked it off with an exceptional panel of local employers who talked about what they look for now in employees, how that has changed over time, and how they anticipate it will continue to change. So we had members of the community, we of course had members of the Board of Education, we had students, community members and staff. And so together, we really sought to establish a learner profile that again encompasses not only academic achievement for our students, but also the development of essential life skills in order for students to thrive. So here are the five, what we're calling competencies that we, that the team came up with. And it was a wonderful process that, that I believe led to some really, really interesting in-depth discussions that got us to this place. So what we're saying essentially with the learner profile is that in order to thrive, in order for our students to be successful, they need to have these key competencies. They need to be able to be critical thinkers, adaptable learners, effective communicators, intentional collaborators, and creative contributors. So first and foremost, we strive to cultivate critical thinking in our students. We aim to equip them with the ability to apply their knowledge, their skills, and their experiences in order to solve novel problems, while also actively seeking out and listening to a wide variety of perspectives in order to eventually draw informed conclusions. By fostering critical thinking, we are empowering our students to navigate complex challenges with hopefully confidence and clarity. So next up, adaptable learners. So our students hopefully will demonstrate the ability to adjust to new situations, respond productively to feedback, and empathize with diverse views. In an ever-changing world, adaptability is key, and we want our students to embrace change as an opportunity for growth. And I think that this idea of adaptable learners or adaptability was one of the most important things that came out of our discussions at our four design team meetings. In part because the world is changing so quickly, it's hard to anticipate what things are going to look like five years, 10 years, let alone 15 or 20. So effective communicators. Our students will be able to articulate their ideas clearly in a variety of forms and contexts. So they will develop active listening skills. So in order to communicate, of course, we want to hone in on their listening skills in order for them to decipher meaning and intentions, fostering deeper connections with one another and understandings. They will also gain the ability to give presentations for a range of purposes and audiences, preparing them for success in their future post-high school endeavors. Then we have intentional collaborators. So we believe that working within a group to achieve a common goal, integrating the diverse perspectives that come with that group, not only enriches the learning of that individual, but it also enriches the learning of the collective whole. We feel like collaboration and a collaborative nature is so important for the modern workforce. And by fostering intentional collaborators, we could, we will create a supportive and inclusive environment for our kiddos. And then creative contributors. So our students will engage in problem solving, inquiry, and innovative solutions to improve societal outcomes. They will demonstrate originality and imaginative ideas, contributing to the generation of new and meaningful solutions. So by encouraging creativity, we're empowering our students to think outside the box and make a positive impact in their communities. So our next steps, so we have our five competencies and we have descriptors for those competencies. And so, and we have a wonderful looking poster also to go along with this. But we don't just want this to be a poster on a wall. We want it to be our guiding light, our north star, what we're doing day in and day out in the classroom. And so some of our next steps include, first off, awareness. What is a learner profile and what are our five competencies? Why are they so important? An understanding of the competencies as we're defining them. You know, you talk about effective collaboration. That could mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. But how in SRV USD are we defining it? And then how are we assessing it across grade levels? You know, what does effective collaboration look like in first grade versus ninth grade versus 12th grade? Right? And so how are we really developing rubrics or other guides to assess the extent to which students have developed these competencies? And then of course, integrating them into the curriculum. So it's not something separate. I'm not going to learn my content and then engage in these competencies. I'm engaging in these competencies in order to learn the content and skills I need in biology, in chemistry, in English. Thereby, I'm not only learning the content and skills, I'm learning the competencies that we just discussed. So I wanted to express my gratitude to all the individuals who participated in the creation of the learner profile. I greatly appreciate their time and effort. So, and thank you all.
I have a question. So you mentioned life skills. How are, and maybe you don't know yet because we're established these and now we have to figure out how we're going to implement them and measure how the, how our students are doing. But how are we able to incorporate life skills into our curriculum? For example, personal finance, things like that. Also skills and how to deal with, you know, tough situations and emotions and all of that. How are we going to be doing that?
Well, so we have district-wide essential standards that the curriculum and instruction team worked really closely with teacher leaders over the course of the last two years really to establish. And so those are, of course, for every course and every grade level, there are essential standards that parents and students and teachers can expect to have regardless of where that student goes to school. So it's going to be essential. I feel like an essential part of our next step is really looking at those essential standards and the extent to which they're integrating these essential life skills explicitly. And if they're not, then how are we refining them over time? Because again, the essential standards are the standards that are essential to that course, that everybody must teach by the time that student leaves that grade level or leaves that course. So I think that that's going to be instrumental. I also think that the assessment, including probably starting with self-assessments, so students can really look at themselves, using a rubric and say, how, how well did I collaborate in that particular activity last week? How adaptable am I when something new or different comes at me in the classroom, right? These really, really important skills that we know students have to have.
I just want to say that I was lucky to be one of the board members who actually participated in the design team. And I'd really like to thank you and of course, all the team members. I mean, I, I felt like I was one of the intentional collaborators, right? In the teams because I worked, right, we worked with students, parents, community members to come up with. And yes, in the four sessions, it was hours of collaboration and it was very deliberate, intentional, and just grabbing everyone's input. And yeah, it was just a very, very valuable.
Thank you so much for your contributions. It was great to have you on the design team. Is anybody else from the design team here?
All right, thank you so much.
We invited people to come and it's so wonderful to see you. We weren't sure since school is out, but we can't thank you enough for your work as I, because it was really invaluable. Again, the discussions that we had about what we really want students to know and be able to do were just off the charts amazing. And people came for hours and hours over the course of the last few months to devote their time, and we really, really appreciate it. So thank you so much for being here.
I wanted to add on to what Susanna said. It was one of the best teams I've ever been on in the district because it really felt like intentional collaboration, the way the group would wrestle through some things, come up with some, so I'm complimenting the facilitation first. Take it back to the cabinet, they would work with it, they'd come back. And so it was this iterative process where I think everyone involved felt like their input was heard, not just, here you go, bye. It, it, not check-a-box collaboration, but really like meaningful collaboration. And so I just wanted to compliment you and the outside facilitator and the thoughtful way that cabinet came back. And then the committee came back and I, it just, that's the way it should always be. It was really good. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, and I just want to say I really appreciate this. I feel like it's, you know, to your point, it's a north star. It's, it's really essentially goals about the outcome for our students. And so now we have that framework, which is wonderful and I think will help us as our strategic directions evolve. And then maybe when we get to the next step of reevaluating them in the next few years and that type of thing, this is some really rich work. I would, I would ask, and it's probably built in, but maybe actually listing it in the next steps, after assessment across grade levels, to then, then look. after assessment across grade levels, to then look at what changes need to be made in terms of the integration, so then that level, I guess, the integration into curriculum, so that we're learning from assessment and adjusting. I think sometimes we forget about that, even though we unconsciously maybe do it, but I think it's really important for us to list it and have it be one of our steps. It's a wonderful point. Thank you.
The only comment I have is, one, great work. This is amazing. It's awesome that, you know, students, everybody from the community got to participate in this. When you were having your discussions, did you have discussions of what this looks like in the elementary level, middle school, high school, and how we can kind of move kids into this? So by the time they're in high school, it's very well-built in?
We did have some discussions and some ideas for next steps, but I think that that's really something that we have to take back and really work alongside our teachers in order to develop what that looks like. But what we're thinking right now is each grade level really needs a rubric for each of the competencies. And at least initially, the students are really looking at where they fall along that continuum, and then they can almost develop individual goals for themselves on how they're going to proceed. You know, there's also a part of the elementary report card, too, that has, we call it, I think, college and career readiness, that we could, we're thinking about switching to the competencies. And so that it's something that is not only demonstrated to students and to teachers, but also to families when their report card comes home. So those are things that we're thinking about.
Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, I thought I had something really quick.
Please, of course.
Yeah, of course. Great job. It's so wonderful to see kind of the outcome of all of these discussions. The one thing I wanted to add is, as we're going forward and we're kind of looking into assessing this and integrating into the curriculum, which would, you know, in some cases look like assessments. I know we're emphasizing, you know, being an effective communicator, which is such an important role. But like, looking at the fact that students do get anxious and like, looking at how we can assess it in a way where we're not trying to get students to change like who they are. I feel like that's something I've just seen at school a lot. I've heard from students in terms of how they're assessed. And I know at some of these meetings, we have great students, and a lot of them are very outspoken, but also making sure we're getting some of that input from students who may be more shy as well, and how we're supporting who they are as a person, helping them grow, because, you know, just their personality and who they are is already valuable in a workplace and making sure their perspective and experience is right.
If you don't mind if I respond to that. It's funny that you say that because we actually had a different term for communication. And we were, and a lot of people at our last design team meeting were really making the point that you're making, Anya, in terms of, it was coming across as the only way you can communicate is if you can get up in front of a crowd and give a presentation. And that's really important, but there's also other ways that you can communicate that are really effective, that we want to promote. And so the way we wrote it, hopefully that gets across because we don't want it to just be the confident, get up in front of the class speakers. That's really important, but there's also other aspects to effective communication.
Perfect. I just wanted to bring that up. But thank you so much for the work that you and your entire team has done.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everything. Okay, now we're on 10.2, which is... Card on 10.1?
Yes.
Okay.
The learner profile, right?
Yeah. Taiwan's a country.
So, thank you. Am I? I don't, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I apologize because I don't know why your meetings keep becoming a conflict meeting with other jurisdictions, and so I apologize that I come in late. I just want to address the learner profile. In our society, it seems like whoever is more outspoken gets noticed. And then they are the ones who are given the attention. And not only that, they're giving the merit of being smart or intelligent or competent, which is not necessarily true from the culture that I come from. I just want to stress that as an East Asian culture, our culture value students, people, members of society who do things, who may not necessarily speak because of historically, whoever gets really outspoken in my culture, in my ancestral history, they get persecuted, they get killed. So I hope that in our diversity, that teachers, administrators, trustee members will take that into consideration and encourage their peers, their teachers, to evaluate a person's character. Whatever they do, even if they're extremely outspoken, doesn't mean that they're extremely competent. If what they are intended to say or do end up hurting the greater good for the community or for the group. I think intentions, characters really matter in education, especially in public education, because it's for everyone. So therefore, I ask you to please, in the future, when you develop curriculum, when you evaluate, you know, student merit, that you take that into consideration. And that student/learner profiles really should be as diverse as our population and, you know, the background that we all come from, and not just, you know, a very stringent and very narrow field that we evaluate the students. That's all. Thank you.
I'm sorry. We're on 10.2, a public comment for non-agendaized items. These comments are limited to three minutes per person, and at this time, we have three cards. So first, I'd like to invite up Eliza Tinker. And following Eliza will be Leonard Matthews. And we're going to say this is it on the cards because we've now opened up the comments, okay?
Thank you, trustees, Superintendent Malloy, and staff. I'm Elisa Tinker. My pronouns are she, her, hers, and I serve on the board of our local PFLAG chapter. Oh, thank you. In honor of Pride Month, I'm excited to tell you about and invite everyone to our community's second annual Pride event co-sponsored by the City of San Ramon, the San Ramon Valley Diversity Coalition, and San Ramon Valley PFLAG. It will be on Thursday, June 15th, from 4:30 PM to 8:30 at the amphitheater in Central Park in San Ramon. It's a family-friendly event with music, activities, speakers, and food trucks. Local businesses will be there to show their support of the community. You can find more information on Instagram at PFLAG underscore SRV. So bring a chair or blanket, bring a picnic if you wish, but we welcome you to come celebrate Pride with us. Thank you.
Well, I guess I should have been a little more clear and kind of said last call on public comment cards. So I'm going to take these two, and then I'm going to say last call on public comment cards for item 10.2, okay? I've got them. All right, next, Leonard Matthews, please come up. And after Leonard will be Micoretta.
Dr. Malloy, I rise this evening to respond to the comments that you made about my presentation on April 25th. On that evening, whilst I was in taking a moment in the lobby, you, Dr. Malloy, said the following, I'll quote. I'll say it to him when I speak. Mr. Matthews talked about platitudes and pretty much spoke to us in a way that says we need to do something a certain way. Respectfully, I disagree. He's heard it from me already. It's nothing, it's not new. You continued, Mr. Matthews' perspective is certainly a valid one. It is not the only one. And again, we got to be at the table to bring it out together. To be clear, ladies and gentlemen, my perspective is that African-American educators and students be allowed to write their own section of the ethnic studies curriculum. I extended that request on behalf of Jenny Shuen, an Asian educator who had the same request. You're right, Dr. Malloy, this is nothing new. We spoke by phone on January 22nd, January 21st, 2022, and I presented my perspective. And you, as a person who, in that conversation, freely chose to identify as a white male, said, quote, "There are other ways," end quote. Thank you for acknowledging our previous conversation. And here, one year later, you have said the same thing, that there are, quote, "other perspectives." Dr. Malloy, you said that, quote, "There is never getting it right." I do not define humanity that way, end quote. I respectfully disagree. There is such thing as getting it right, and getting it right can define humanity. You said that we should be at the table. I'd have said that to you at the table, but when that table convened on April 21st, I didn't receive the invite that I was offered to be at that table. So therefore, I've been a professional and waited patiently for one year, Dr. Malloy. After waiting one year, Dr. Malloy, can you please tell me the other way to properly represent the African-American ethnicity, since African-Americans and the students are not being allowed to write our own perspective? Please share that with me. If you have time, please address the Asian students and educators who asked the same thing. Now, I know that you're willing to comment on things after people have said things. Dr. Malloy, I have patiently waited for a year for you to answer that question. If we, as African-American students and educators, cannot write our own mandatory curriculum about our own ethnicity, exactly who do you say as a chosen white male should be writing it for us? Thank you.
Next commenters, Mr. Arada. And after Mr. Arada will be Taiwan's a country.
The 22-23 school year, like last year, we could, like last year, has demonstrated remarkable irresponsibility on the part of district leadership. This year began with two staff personnel being arrested, including Baldwin Elementary employee Andrew Oliver Colick in August for child porn, and Nicholas Mosby in September for various lewd acts involving minors. After complaints about Mosby at SRV High, he'd been moved to Diablo Vista Middle School. Some of the abuse allegation records at SRV High then conveniently disappeared. Then, a high school boy wearing sunglasses invaded an SRV High School girl's locker room. The district's response was what it had characterized, excuse me. The district's response said that girls who were uncomfortable could change in a bathroom stall. Academic performance drop-offs were revealed in CAA P test results. The district's response was what it had characterized as grading for equity in a July workshop. Meanwhile, intrusions on childhood innocence and parental rights continued with LGBTQ read-alouds in even the youngest grades, including kindergarten. LGBTQ Prism Club activism involving nine-to-11-year-old fourth and fifth graders accelerated and invaded more elementary sites. Without the affirmative opt-in notices that should be required, and unless opt-outs were filed, children were assumed to be targets of opportunity by adult Prism Club activists. The sign shows an example of perverse Prism Club activities, in this case at Country Club. A Prism Club member there was evidently induced to write a note to his or her regular teacher, saying the child would appreciate it if that teacher would display the so-called progress flag in support of the LGBTQ community. The fourth or fifth grade child tried to self-characterize as pansexual, quote-unquote, but couldn't spell that word, nor the words appreciate, community, or even progress. The child needed spelling lessons, not Prism Club gender-bender indoctrination. I should note that the teacher targeted in the note had nothing to do with my obtaining a copy of it. The year regressed further with exposure of degenerate pornography in high school libraries, defended by librarians who rely on the Depraved American Library Association for supposed justification. ALA itself demands no age or content limits in any library. It's a bad paragon to model your program after. The good news is that increasing numbers of parents and other taxpayers have begun recognizing the district's perverse corruption and speaking out about it. Some have had enough and are avoiding the district's perversely corrupt indoctrination programs by moving kids to private schools or to homeschooling.
Next, we have Taiwan's a country, and following her will be Yvonne.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, so I just want to share with you my experience on Memorial Day evening. It took place at Doughty Valley High School, which is my neighborhood high school. And I am very sure that my property taxes go to fund that school, whether it is building or operations. That night, I was there to allow my family members to unload after a long trip because I live in a townhome, and I am not able to park on the property of my HOA because once we have filled up our garage, all the other outside parking spaces are for guests. So to observe our rules, I went to Doughty Valley High School. At the time, it was just me, and it was around 10 o'clock, a memorial night, Memorial Day night. Now, 15 minutes into my walking, a gray-colored Mercedes-Benz SUV came over and started shining the headlights at me for about six minutes. During that time, it's already the second time that they have come back. The first time, I called the police. I called the police, they left. And then the second time, they came back. And then this time, they didn't really approach me very, very closely. They were about an aisle away. I was in front of the gymnastics parking lot. And I felt extremely harassed, and they were not normal teenagers. They told me that they were students, and I don't belong there, and I should just go. And I just want to let you know that it is not acceptable, especially now you're going to ask taxpayers like me, who own properties, to vote, you know, approval on the measure for additional property taxes that you want. If I'm going to be treated this way, I am not going to pay for it. I don't deserve to be harassed, and I don't want my police officers to be shot because of these, you know, kids. Who knows if they're armed or not? And they claim that they are students there, which I highly doubt because they said something about Cupertino. So the reason why I'm up here is I know, when I was at the joint associate meeting, that Cal-High is experiencing outside high school kids, specifically from Dublin, that is messing with our kids. I would like those to be shared with the city so then property owners, who may not necessarily have students in the school district, would be able to be alerted to the possible dangers and rogue teenagers around our communities because we share those premises. And it is your responsibility to make sure everyone is aware of what's going on. Furthermore, that night, it wasn't just that car. There were a bunch of teenagers that ended up like running into the campus area from the pool. So I don't know if you guys had experienced vandalism that weekend, but I really would like you guys to please let the community know what's going on if there is any issues that we should be concerned of. Thank you.
Hey, Yvonne?
Good evening. My name is Yvonne, and I've met with several of you on multiple occasions, be it in person or electronically via email. And I'm going to start out by saying myself and my husband, David, are parents of two students in SRV School District. We have five children. Our first three adults also went through the school district and were grandparents. I have a grandson who will be in the school district in the next year. Our children, one of them was at Country Club, the other was at Walt Disney. And I'm going to share with you our profession and faith, as I've made with you electronically, verbally, in person, and by context. We are Christians by title and by practice. We believe in Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior. We believe that He, Jesus Christ, is the only Son of God, that He was sent to the earth and died on the cross for each of our sins and the sins of the world. We recognize that God's love for us, we recognize God's love for us, and in turn, we recognize we are to love others as God loves us. We, as the parents of our children, have chosen not to allow our children to participate in the read-alouds at Country Club and any other school within the school district. as they are in direct conflict with our personal convictions, which are based on the Holy Bible, which we believe is God's living word, from which we draw our spiritual and moral values. God and Jesus, being the highest authority in our lives and our children, calls us to raise our children according to scripture. I mention that to you because you have a policy that states in the SRV Board Policy Manual in section sixty-one, forty-three, that staff members shall be highly sensitive to their obligation not to interfere with the religious development of any student in whatever tradition that student embraces. That's in your policy, not in ours. That's in your policy. Staff shall not endorse, encourage, or solicit religious or anti-religious expressions or activities among students during the class time. As part of their official rules and duties, staff shall not leave students in prayer or other religious activities. However, staff shall not prohibit or discourage any student from praying or otherwise expressing his or hers religious beliefs as long as it does not disrupt the classroom. We do not disrupt the classroom with our beliefs. In fact, we've asked you kindly to allow us to opt out. You do not have a policy that provides those provisions for families as such. We've met with many. Many are coming. I assure you, those families are represented by the Christian community, Catholic community, Hindu, Muslim community, and other non-religious communities, and we want change.
Okay, um, next thing here is association president's reports. Um, Tammy, which you're not gonna do a report tonight, okay? And is a representative from Serbia here? Okay, so no association president's reports. So Taiwan's a country, you had a card for this item, but because there's no report, we're gonna skip that card, okay? All right, next thing is our student board member report. And I said that with emphasis.
Um, hi, everyone. So the ending of the school year is always bittersweet. Um, I just wanted to extend my thanks to all the administrators, teachers, certified and classified personnel, students, um, who made this school year possible, um, as well as the graduating class of twenty-three. Um, I just want to say good luck and congratulations to them. Um, this year has been exciting for me because I got to experience the school year not only just as a student, um, but also from this role as student board member. And I can say it really is two different worlds from what you experience, um, at school and at the district. Um, I've learned so much in this role, uh, and I've done my best to represent students, um, our diverse student body in this district, um, in district decision-making. Um, so finally, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. That's about it.
Thank you, Anya. And now we have superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Hurd. At the last board meeting, I had the opportunity to share some great insights about our students and about our staff and about our parents and community. And tonight, I just want to take a few moments to acknowledge our extended cabinet team. I didn't do that explicitly in the last meeting. Many of them are here in the back of the room. You get to see and hear from many in this room, but the countless hours that the team spends listening to what's happening in classrooms and in schools, engaging in department offices, analyzing situations, collaborating throughout, working through really tough issues where there is seldom an easy answer because frankly, things don't get to us when there are easier answers because that is worked out in classrooms and in schools. And I know that the hours that the team spends are extensive. And I don't take the opportunity to thank them publicly enough. We couldn't do the work that we do without them. I know that the most important work in the district happens in classrooms. I totally get that. And yet, there are many of us who support that work. And I know that some in our community sometimes think, and they've shared with me, that maybe we don't need so many people working outside of classrooms because their work isn't as important. And I get why some might have that perception. But I know that you're aware, because you work closely with us, that the intensity is a different one. Supporting learning, supporting students, supporting our school communities. And so to my team, some who aren't here, many who are back there and oftentimes still here at eleven o'clock, if our meeting is going till then, to my assistant superintendent team, that's, uh, right here around this table, uh, to our, um, members of our comms team, some of who aren't on cabinet, who spend a lot of time with us. And I would be absolutely remiss, the person who has to keep me on track in line fails some days, but is brilliant ninety-nine percent of the time. Fail some days because I'm tough to manage. That's coming from Cindy, Cindy Fisher. So I just wanted to take my time to thank them.
And we did have a card on Anya's report as well as on John's. So Taiwan's a country, can you kind of put them together? Yes, thank you.
And I will make both in two minutes, in three minutes. So first of all, um, student board member, I just want to thank you so much. You have carried yourself really worthy of a San Ramon, um, you know, uh, student coming from to the district. I'm very, very proud of you. Thank you for your service. And all the best to you going forward. I'm not sure if you're continuing, but I'm seeing that there is a seed student board member, so I assume that every year is a different person. Um, so I, you know, just thought that I will wish you all the best because of that, and that I'm very proud of you. You did great. Um, superintendent, I, I'm so sorry. I feel like you are a shield. Everybody just keep darting you and keep, you know, launching arrows at you and me included sometimes. And, um, I just want to let you know that when I was a teenager, um, I was always very encouraged, um, by something that I saw when I visited, um, Christian, uh, bookstores. And, uh, it says, "When the going gets tough, the tough gets going." And I just want to say that you definitely are very tough, and thank you so much for your service, as well as all of your team members. Um, you know, of course, uh, you know, it's really everyone's, um, effort. And it doesn't matter if I necessarily agree with all of your agendas or curriculums. I know some of them are coming from the top. Some, sometimes it's coming from lateral. But because of our country is really a very special one, so we really need to learn to appreciate everyone as a person, even though we can take on the issue, you know, um, as how we feel is different or whatever. But at the end of the day, I just want to tell you thank you so much, and thank you to all of your team members. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes reports to the board. Now we're into our action items and public hearings. The first one, eleven point one, is a public hearing for the proposed two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Local Control and Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP. And I just want to clarify that this is a public hearing. Um, John Campopiano is gonna introduce the item, and then we actually come back next week and, and do our approvals. But this is where we shed the light on the LCAP. John, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and try to be brief, but also clear. The Local Control Accountability Plan oftentimes can be something that we, uh, hear and don't understand. So the actual document, which the public hearing is opening with, is an eighty-two-page document, which I encourage and is posted on our website for review. And there is valuable information in there that we've got, we've received from our community partners. But first, I want to thank the staff that have been coming to the meetings, the students, our union leadership, President Castellucio, President Finco, and Vice President Daly from Serbia came to every meeting. Trustees Clark and Brat joined us this year. Thank you so much. Trustee Hurd and Ordway have been in past meetings, and I'm looking forward to you joining us future LCAP meetings. The LCAP meeting is a three-year cycle, and this is the third year. So the plan that's presented on the website is the third year. So next year is a huge year for San Ramon Valley Unified School District and all state schools in California. We will be reviewing the data from the past three years. Have we met our metrics? Have we increased, decreased? And a lot of the same information is on our dashboard, which you all are aware of. And then also next year, we will be developing a new three-year plan. And we would love community partners to join us, students, staff, as it's critical for the next three years. So the documents are online. I'm gonna go through a few highlights. When Dr. Malloy joined us, um, we really loved the way we went. We combined the strategic directions with our LCAP plan. And we've gone through these directions throughout the school year. We chose to make our goals prior to the strategic directions. We had anywhere from eight to eleven goals in the SRV USD LCAP. We decided it made sense to align with three of our strategic directions, and they are equity, deep learning innovation, and social emotional well-being. So the way the LCAP works is we set actions, goals, and services to meet the needs of students to create a positive outcome. So as a reminder, our equity strategic direction has, and here's goals, and I've pulled out a few things that we'll be going through in the LCAP. And let's just take one of them. I won't go through these because we've covered these in our equity presentations and others. But goal three of the equity strategic direction, develop teaching and learning experiences that are responsive to and supportive of diverse cultures and identities. So with this strategic direction that our trustees have approved and our team has developed, we have an LCAP plan where we allot dollars to actions to meet the goals for positive outcomes for students. So for example, I pulled actions. Every goal that we have, we have three goals in our LCAP. Each goal has anywhere from eleven to twenty-two actions, and we just pulled a few out. All the actions are online in the board report, and there's an email link that comes directly to me, and I answer any questions and provide additional feedback next week or throughout the week. So for example, action two point four was critical for us. All four comprehensive high schools have an ethnic studies course, and that has been, we're way ahead of most districts, as you are aware. Additionally, we've had symposium to get our students together, working with trustees and cabinet members and our superintendent, Dr. Malloy. So within our LCAP, we have different actions. Uh, our Responding Discrimination and Hate Handbook Gender Support Plan is all in as an action. Now, part of the actions is that we are responsible for measuring their impact next year. So at this meeting next year, myself or someone else will be going over the impact from this three-year plan and presenting the next three-year plan for your review, input from the community, and approval. So then we go to deep learning innovation. Again, we aligned with our strategic directions, and it was really something that Dr. Malloy pushed our cabinet team. Let's not have them be separate documents. Let's be guided by this strategic direction. Let's put them together so that we can connect dots, which has been really important for our, uh, meetings and as we grow. And it's going to really help us next year because we'll be deep in our understanding of our strategic directions. We'll be in a different place than we were when we wrote this originally. So it'll be a beautiful process. So for example, deep learning, um, use authentic forms of assessment where students are expected uh, to meaningful apply essential knowledge and skills. We all know we have our grade reform committee and other work we're doing on assessment. So within our actions of our LCAP, I just highlighted that one, action one point one-two, the grade and reform committee. That has been meeting throughout the year. It's been presenting. There's been parent workshops. There's been student input. It has been a very robust process, and that is an example of tying our strategic directions to the actions in our LCAP to provide services to support all students. And our third LCAP goal, social emotional well-being, again, we have our strategic goals with that, and we applied actions. And this is one that has been profoundly impactful on our students, is the idea of our social workers. When we started the LCAP process and trustee Hurd might remember, we had one social worker, and we developed the needs. I could be wrong on that, but to see, right? And to see that growth where now we have wraparound services in each feeder pattern, that's an example of how we use, um, the LCAP to move forward the actions and the goals. Um, I'm wrong on the numbers of the elementary counselors. I will change that. But adding counselors to our sites, nine of them, incredible impact. So now we have counselors K twelve. And so the wellness centers, the comprehensive high schools, those actions align with the strategic directions and also, uh, meet the needs of our LCAP. So I'm assuming some of these actions will remain in our new plan that we write next year. So next year, to repeat one last time, will be critical as we envision three years of LCAP. And what happens next in this process, after this week of review by our public and our trustee input, we will submit this plan to the county office for their review and approval or any corrections. So I know I went quickly. I know the LCAP is often sometimes, uh, people have questions about. So I'd love to take any questions and discuss them, or I look forward to people emailing me throughout the week with any questions they have. Thank you.
So this is my first reading on LCAP. So I'm gonna ask a few questions, and definitely we can have some open dialogue on email and stuff, um, because I don't want to drag the meeting unnecessarily. As we were to read this, though, the, this is the first reading of a proposal. So for example, one point one zero, um, that talks about STEM, ELA, college career readiness, and then we have the total funds, and we say, um, nine hundred seventy-nine thousand and change. And then contributing, yes, means that this is coming from, I'll see.
Explain that, yes.
Okay, perfect. So, but this is the proposal for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
This is the ongoing proposal that was prior. So we submitted this to trustees two years ago.
Got it.
So this is the third year of the plan. So there will be some of the metrics that we may meet, not meet, or may exceed.
Okay.
And so it's more of a review for input. It's not necessarily anything new. What's new is the data in the year-two outcomes. So we update the data in the year-two outcomes. So each goal has metrics. And what happens is we had a baseline metric in nineteen-twenty, and let's, um, I won't go too much. I'd love to talk about this a lot, but we had a metric, let's say seventy-five percent of students took X class. And then we measure it, and our goal may have been to increase it by five percent. So each year, we measure whether we've grown or not, and then we get to the outcome. Next year, we're gonna look at, did we meet those outcomes? Should we keep those outcomes? Should we change the metric?
Got it. Okay. So these numbers are for three-year run patterns, not necessarily for twenty-three, twenty-four.
And so the goal was set for three years. The actions were set for three years, and then the measurements change annually when we get the data.
Okay, excellent. And then, next question.
Sure.
Uh, so this is in, uh, goal number two. And as I was reading this, it kind of popped out at me. It, it, it talks about addressing existing systemic inequities within our school. Have, do we have detailed lists of things that we've identified that we're working on and changing?
Right. I can show you one of the, uh, metrics that we have for that one, for the equity goal. If you look at, and we started to, when you see the metrics, they weren't as, um, defined as they should be. But if you go into action two point two, and this is something, uh, Ms. Jones and her team are working on, one of the actions is recruit onboard and retain a more diverse staff. On our district dashboard, you will see a percentage of, uh, retention rate for diverse staff, and so we're measuring that. What we should have done is set a baseline number for that so we can measure it. So we've done it on the dashboard, and most likely we'll put it in this moving forward. It's something I think we'd want to measure.
And if I can add, uh, to the question, we do have systemic data that California would call disproportionate data. Where we, where our data shows that maybe, um, our special education students or our African-American students or LGBTQ students might be overrepresented or underrepresented in achievement or in the California Healthy Kids Survey or what have you. So yes, we do have that data, and it is published, uh, regularly. And we do place that into our, uh, social emotional well-being report, our equity report, and our deep learning report when it comes to annually. That's why in some ways, this is more like a culmination report. If you could pull together all the reports you get strategically each month, some districts don't do that. They only do this. Whereas we shifted that so that you get to see the data specific to every one of those topics monthly, which is why we always have that strategic directions line in every monthly, uh, every monthly agenda.
Got it. And so, and, and, and the reason why this jumped out at me, when I think of systemic inequities, it's something that's built into our system that creates an inequity, but it sounds like we're taking a little bit of a broader definition that in, within our system, we might experience.
Yes and no.
Okay.
There's two things we need to look at. Whenever our data suggests that there are trends that we don't like.
Yeah.
We gotta figure out what those trends are. Sometimes it's more of an individual situation, where we just have to provide different interventions or different supports. Sometimes there may be some cultural barriers where certain kids aren't provided access to the learning programs that they need, such as different courses and such. Sometimes it might be that we have to really dig in and uncover that students aren't given the respect or that sense of inclusion that they might require. Every situation is different, but I always say that when we're looking at disproportionate data, we have to look at individual cases, cultural, which are community cases, and sometimes systemic cases. And we have to kind of look at each one specifically, and it's never that easy. Some of the issues that we deal with have, um, all levels that influence it. So it's, it's kind of like, I mean, I hate to use a research term. We talk a lot about triangulating data. For those who, who don't know what that means, it simply says you don't look at any one source. You look at multiple sources and try to make meaning out of it, and so that's something we've been spending a lot of time doing.
Excellent. All right. Thank you for that. Excellent. Alright, thank you for that. Dude, does anybody else have any other questions? Go for it. Pop pop in there so I don't just talk.
Um, I noticed that with some of the the assessment, the the data, that that there was a dip from year one to year two. And now, you know, we're waiting on the assessments for year two, year three. Um, and I, you know, I feel like we kind of have unfortunately a pocket full of excuses with the pandemic and various things. But um how does this relate to accountability from a state level standpoint?
Thank you. In terms of the assessment, we're hopeful that, you know, the cash testing comes back with good numbers. We're we're confident we've made some significant improvements. We've tried to go more local so that we can get additional data beyond the cast. So our social emotional well-being survey, our healthy kids survey is great, but it only comes out once a year. And so we will be measured on our dashboard and and not everyone has gone to our dashboard. We pull up our dashboard, we review the LCAP and it'll compare data how we are doing with county schools and state schools within English language, mathematics primarily. And they use a bar system like on your iPhone now, one bar to five in terms of that. And we um exceed in both the county and the state and all assessment data from the LCAP. But what we've said for years here is we need to drill deeper. And so the the dashboard wants to see growth with students that are English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged and our foster homeless youth. So we are not accepting, our college and career data, for example, is as high as most um higher than almost every school district in the state. However, we know not every student in our school district is exceeding. So that's where our hope is that we can drill down in the LCAP to have specific plans, actions and services for students that meet everyone. So that's kind of where we're going with that. But we're hopeful that uh Kit Bragg, our director of assessment or Deb Pettish will be able to do a presentation probably in July, August with the new data and hopefully it will be positive and that'll help us with our metrics.
Yeah, and I think that it 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 gives us the opportunity to look at that data and 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 see where um and acknowledge the fact that there is that dip and what do we need to do about it? Because again, we may have a pocket full of excuses, but they're just excuses. And the bottom line is that we have to make sure that 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 it's an increase, not a decrease in the assessments, right? Um, and then and then just, I I guess another question, kind of to the point of what you were talking about. Um, I've been on the LCAP committee and I understand that the LCAP committee is based on funding that we get specifically for unduplicated students, which are our foster youth, our um low low economic um income students and our English language learners. Does that also include special education or no? Okay. Um, and and then when, as I go through the the report and there's, you know, some of the 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 action items are designated for all and some are designated specifically for whether it's ELA or all three or just foster youth or that kind of thing. Um, it I think it would be interesting for us to look at in some of those key all action items, you know, that like MTSS liaisons, for example. If if as we're accruing data, if we look at the the specific groups of students that the LCAP dollars are specifically for.
Right.
How they engage with MTSS liaison. So, you know, we do have the ability to see and we see how it affects all, but how does it affect the students that were accountable to make sure that this this money goes to? And I and I also understand that there's nuance to that because when we support all students, we're supporting those students in in a in a in a more authentic way because we're providing a a a classroom, for example, that has a little bit more inclusivity or um more opportunity for for all students to get what they need so that each student can can rise, right? But it's just, it's data points that I think would be interesting for some of those key things since, again, LCAP dollars are specifically for that those students.
And I think to to respond to that and answer trustee Van Zee's question about contributing page fifty of this document for anyone listening and reviewing it, talks exactly about trustee Brad is saying. How how the dollars directly apply to the student groups we've discussed. They can still serve all, but are they principally directed towards the students that have the greatest need? And that is where um school districts are expected to self-monitor. And also the county comes in and looks at, and we need to have data that shows our English learners are increasing. And we can't just assume they will because we add counselors, which is great. We need to add counselors. But is it helping our English learners meet the metrics, exceed the metrics?
Right, how is it impacting those?
Right. And that's where the contributing you were saying, and and Mr. Miller and Dr. Kemp are here to talk any of the budget part, the supplemental concentration dollars we receive approximately six point five million-ish. Those are contributing dollars that would go directly towards the student groups we've described. And so we want to do a good job ensuring that the impact is there. We're spending that money.
Yeah, and then I just want to give a shout out to that um this next year again, it is a really robust year for the LCAP committee. And um and I believe that you actually commit two, three years to being a part of that that team for those three years. And as someone who's kind of been on LCAP as a parent and as a board member, um, I find it to be a committee that really allows you to dig deep into a working group where you're talking about stuff and your ideas um come to rise to the table and and we have conversations around them. So it's just a really good opportunity for for all of our um educational community collaborators to to be involved.
And thank you for that. And I've visited the D-LAC committee, the community advisory committee, and as many committees that we can bring into the meetings would be extremely helpful for the next three years.
So as we embark on our uh next year of evaluating the LCAP and what we've done and then moving forward, how do we go, how do you go about um deciding what things to add? Or what new things we might need to look at and maybe things that aren't working or aren't being applied the way that we're intending, how how we go about that?
I have an opinion and anyone else can jump in as well. And I think we'll wait two, two responses initially that come ahead is one, we're so much more aligned as a district around our strategic directions. That'll guide us as we're doing it. And if if you were here at the beginning, you'd had an eight to eleven goals and they were just trying to meet things. But now we have specific direction and and that's going to help. Two, we have to really look at the data. Even if we believe it is something that we should do, if the data is telling us this action is not impacting the desired student groups in a way that we think is, we have to have those conversations. And so I think the alignment's critical. And that alignment starts with Dr. Moyth, with you, Dr. Moyth, and all the way through the people that are making these decisions on these budget items. And so that is, that is my hope. The the third point I'll bring to that is we need to have everyone that's represented in our district involved in these meetings. So that we are hearing as many voices as possible, many experiences so that we can have all in these. And and if you've been to them, they're they're really positive um interactive meetings where you can share your truth and we have union partnership, students and staff and all. So that I think is going to be critical. Trustee Clark, that we have all voices.
Just add, and I've actually talked to our state officials about this. Our strategic directions in our LCAP are not two different things. And they are not separate processes. In some districts, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't do it the way we do it. So what our expectations are, is that the strategic directions have always been a fluid document with high-level commitments. And unless the data shifts to the point where those commitments should change, real improvement doesn't happen in three-year spurts. But what does need to change is our action plans each year. So we're taking it from one step to the next. Another structural piece. The way I see it is our steering committees go deeply into the pillars of our strategic directions. And our LCAP should be looking at all of it. But again, it's not separate. The state has a cycle of improvement called LCAP. Our strategic directions process is connected to it. I would argue that the three-year timeframe isn't actually enough time for the kind of transformational improvements we're trying to make. So I would hope that we would not ever feel the re the need to start again, but rather to take a look at, are these still our high-level commitments based upon what the data says? In terms of then what the data is telling us, what would the next best move be and what is our commitment in terms of what we accomplish? It's, I think, really helpful when it's seen in a cyclical way. But I love the fact that we have the steering committees who are going deeper and that that we have the LCAP com- LCAP co- committee that kind of looks at it all. And that's what I hope we will continue to be grateful for.
Thank you for bringing up that our our pages ten, the bottom of ten, eleven and twelve, we've included the steering committee feedback in here, which is is brilliant because it will tie into what we're trying to do. And so, yes, I agree. I think we're in a much better place, trustee Clark, next year to know where we want to go. And hopefully it's just a continual revising and looking at our data sets, our baselines.
I just wanted to say thank you to you because you have done a brilliant job of running that committee and we had so many robust discussions and I learned so much from you and from all the other committee members. So I look forward on to serve on it next year.
Right. I hope others join us as well. Thank you, trustee. Anything else?
Just another question. So um on um action two point three, where we're talking about staff professional development. All these, for the description, it seems like there is um bunch of different organizations that we're gonna partner with in order to do that professional development. Are the ones listed here, what is, what our intention is to utilize for next year?
That's great. These are some of them. And and just because I I my team gets tired of me with the LCAP, so thank you for asking me these questions.
Yeah.
Because I love this stuff. Um. So i- i- in that you see the development ideas and it says a hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. What Mr. Miller and Dr. Kemp do is they determine if and how we spent that money. And if there is a difference, a material difference, it would be listed in the goal analysis. So in the goal analysis, it'll tell you that we ended up spending more money or less money for that. But this changes, this was the baseline that we put a number of years ago and they asked that we keep that baseline in there.
Okay.
So what I could do, what we could do is if I get questions like that, feedback, I could go back and Mr. Miller would be able to pull what we did spend money on of these.
Okay. And and the reason why I ask, um and I'm not gonna try to get out too far ahead of my skis, put you on the spot. So there's a couple of these organizations that just, because some of the feedback I've gotten from teachers is, hey, I want this type of staff development. I want this. I want to be spending my days on staff development on these things, things they're passionate about. So I do kind of take a closer eye because I've gotten that feedback. And as I looked through some of these groups, a couple of yellow flags popped up. So if we're intending to use those in the next school year, I would like to ask some some questions, get a little bit more clarity. Um, and then we can maybe have that conversation.
I think that would be great. And having uh Dr. Pettish with that and showing you our PD plan. We have a lot of internal expertise now that this, when we pulled some of this off, it was bringing in technical assistance externally to it. And so not without going into the entire PD plan, that would be a great conversation to have.
And if I can add, I I feel very strongly and my beloved team has to deal with me. I don't believe in a lot of outside professional learning. I believe in outside partners simply to challenge our thinking, help us think deeply about other ways of doing things. But I actually expect through our shared leadership model that with our three thousand staff members, we've got that expertise bubbling up all over. And then our staff members help us understand what structures work best. So we've tried the shared leadership teams this year. And I really appreciate the work there because that's bringing a team, not just the principal, to sessions where it's facilitated by us. Our our liaisons, our local leaders who learn on behalf of their community and then bring that learning back. Our collaboration time is all school-based. So where some love and appreciate lots of outside partners, I would argue that we just need a few critical friends. And I actually use that language pretty explicitly too. We'll do the work, but we want to hear about other insights and perspectives. And we'll incorporate it in a San Ramon way as opposed to becoming something that might not actually align explicitly with our context. And I'm only smiling because we may have had a different history and I think I've been pretty perseverant, persevering, Debbie, don't laugh too loudly about that. But but there are some partners. So if you want to ask some specific questions about what is on that page, they may not be as connected to us now as they may have been when this was developed. But by all means, if there's specific questions you have, I just wanted to provide that context that we are moving in a bit of a different direction related to that.
Would you like me to ask those right now? Okay. So one of the things that that came up, um specifically with the Pacific Education Group um and courageous conversations. At the outset, it looks brilliant. It looks great. As I looked into it more and more and dug into presentations that they've delivered to school districts all across our nation, it is heavily stating um things like critical race theory and how to incorporate it into your schools. And I see that and I know that that's a third rail that we've kind of stated as a community. This is not something that we're doing within our schools. And so kind of hearing what you're saying, Dr. Malloy, is that we don't just kind of unfettered say, alright, go go professionally develop our staff. It is, there's a filtering process that tailors it to our our school and our community and what we're trying to achieve. And that was the thing, there was just a high prevalence of some of those things that when I was looking at, it's, there's been a pretty clear, and and I'm sure there's people that disagree. I'm sure there's people that would want critical race theory being taught here and that could be a discussion we had. But when I saw that, it seems like our current trajectory is, that's not something that we wanted to do. And so I saw a lot of that content being produced by that group. And it sent up a yellow flag, not saying that we're doing that here.
Right.
But if we're working with this group that heavily utilizes that sort of teaching, what are our guardrails for that?
Right. And I'd love, if we answer now or if we future, but the the first one, the Pacific Education Group, we used as a keynote three years ago to talk about building tolerance in schools. It was a forty-five minute session that we used to kick off a discussion about how to build tolerance. I can even share that PowerPoint. We have that. It's from years ago. Our courageous conversations was ongoing. For tone was here, John Williams and John Parks. Uh, John Parks is still a teacher at Doerty Valley High School, where we brought in an outside group to teach us how to have these conversations, you know, lean into your discomfort, expect non-closure, stay engaged. And many members of our district have that there. And that has not been something that we continue. Fair, fair act is something that we've talked about in this group when we go through, but those first two were programs that we definitely leaned into and I have information for it. But like Dr. Mooney said, we've evolved beyond that, especially with Dr. Nguyen joining us, where we've been able to do a lot of our internal. But I'd be happy to continue that or share. I have all that information that we use.
But from a governance point of view, we don't just hire people.
Yeah.
That's what I want to state here. We can have individual conversations about various speakers or various critical friends, but it's actually something that we have clear expectations, clear parameters. And it's something that our ed services team, for the most part, through our supervisors, but also cabinet is aware. And when it happens to be a partner that really is trying to help us change our practice, I'll give an example. We're very connected to a group called Studer. S-T-U-D-E-R. I don't know if it's listed in there, but I'm gonna use them as an example because they do continuous improvement. They don't get into the weeds of what your continuous improvement needs to be, but they teach tools of continuous improvement. They're one such partner that's helping us do our work. They're not coming with a product and say, do this. No, they're not coming and being our keynote. They're actually facilitating pretty challenging work that we're engaged in at the cabinet level, for example. So we have some of those types of, I, as I said earlier, calling them critical friends that are helping us do the work. There are times when our schools will hire um various speakers. We don't micromanage all of that, but we do say to our schools that when there's an issue, it's got to be within the parameters of our strategic directions. And if there is a challenge to anything that does happen, there's a process to follow that is publicly stated regarding how to deal with that. So but again, I'm, I I I wanna reiterate that we've moved away from finding other people elsewhere to come in and take the work for us, but rather through our shared leadership commitment, we're growing leaders or actually not only growing, but honoring leaders who've always been here that may not have been able to influence in the ways in which we're headed now.
Yeah, fair enough. And just to be clear, I I looked into the courageous conversation. I actually watched a little presentation on. I really liked it. And it wasn't until I dug into some further stuff that I saw, oh, this is something maybe ask about. So I appreciate the willingness to discuss that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Okay, so if you have feedback for John, board members or public, you can email him as he requested.
And there's an email link on our website.
Thanks, John. Ah, sorry. Eleven point one is a, there's a yellow card from uh Yvonne. Then if you have one too, go ahead.
I just want to, point of order, we need to record when the public hearing was opened and then when it closes.
Okay. And we can record that from our YouTube. I mean, the whole thing's, the whole item's public hearing, so. I mean, the whole thing's, the whole item's public hearing, so. I didn't open it with the gavel. I opened it with my words.
There you go.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, trustee Benzi, for, thank you for your questions just now. I appreciate um you diving deeper in regards to this. Um, forgive me for not having reviewed the presentation in advance um as it pertains to LCAP. Uh I do have some questions and concerns in relation to it as I've reviewed a portion. Um of what was presented on the slide specifically in relation to the gender support plan. Um, the gender support plan, as I understand it, is specific um to students pre K. Which to be clear, our children as young as four and five years old, um all the way through high school, twelfth grade students. Have the ability um as the district policy reads, which is part of the commitment to diversity. Um, students have the ability to change their name and or gender identity at school. Students further have the right to change information on all non legal documents, school legal documents. Students can change their name and or gender in student information systems. Um, with parent consent or informally, I believe the two types of changes that can take place are both. Official with parents consent and knowledge and participation um and unofficially without parents' knowledge consent. Or participation. Um and that's specifically where I take issue and concern with, or we take issue and concern with. Um acknowledging that the informal name change is um not a legal name change. But it's something that the students on their own, as young as four and five years old, all the way through high school. Can on their own say they would like to change their name and or gender identity. Um, my concern is with the elementary school students, um really for all, but for our youngest personnel, which are our children. Um currently, um. For our children to be able to change their name, I question the frequency. I can tell you right now, if my son had the option to identify as John Cena, he would say he's John Cena. That's who I am. Call me him. Um, cause that's who he identifies with. Um. How often are we going to allow them to do this? If today they are feeling whatever type of way, do they change it today and tomorrow that feeling or thought process changes? Or next week or next year? How often do we change their name behind the scenes? When I log on and I see my child's name and I have no idea that a separate identity exists at school. That creates concern for me when I can't even identify. If I, if there's an emergency. You're not going to know who my child is if you're calling him something else. Um, it's a concern. I have eight seconds left. Um, but I think there needs to be more involvement from parents and more information shared specifically in regards to the gender support plan with parents.
Next speaker, uh Taiwan's country.
Okay, so first of all, um, three minutes really is very short. So um if I be very direct and blunt, I apologize. Cause I don't have time to smooth the edges out, but I do want to say I really appreciate Mr. Campo Pianos. Um, you know, leadership and hard work. I really have a lot of respect uh for his integrity uh as a person and as a professional. So um I was a little bit disappointed that in the presentation, I really didn't see uh dollar signs. Um, coming from my discipline. Uh whenever you talk about accountability, dollar signs need to be next to it. Without it, it is just words. You really cannot, you know, uh, understand. Behind those beautiful words, what are the, how how are the money being spent? And as a taxpayer, I really care about that. So um I am going to ask um that in the future that um that the staff please allow the taxpayers to know. How the money allocated to um the LCAP is spent in terms of counseling, for example. Is it more in the social emotional or are we talking about school counseling? Not everybody has thousands of dollars to pay. Uh trustee Ordway's business uh to apply to top schools that only the most elitist uh class have access to. I myself, when I was applying for college, I was only restricted to three very affordable classes, which was the UC system. Because my family happened to have uh gone through a financial trauma uh due to um a um. Anyways, due to a uh scheme, uh Ponzi scheme that, you know, immigrant parents uh sometimes are not really aware of. When they move to this country. So I was extremely limited. Also, inspired by Senator um. Team Scott's interview with The View yesterday, he was raised by a single mother. He told us that his success is not an exception because he was given opportunity. So I would like to know, I do really didn't see opportunities. My father was raised by a single uh mother because during the wartime, my my uh grandfather passed away before he was able. Uh before he was born, but there were opportunities in your LCAP. I fail to see that for those people who cannot immediately afford a four year college. And they go work or they go through like a gap year. How can they come back later for education? Because everything now is digitalized. So does it mean that they have to go to a a higher uh education immediately? Or how are we going to help them? And is this part of the scope of the LCAP? Um, you know, boundaries. So all in all, I really would like you to please put dollar sign next to it and really. Get to the depth of opportunities and not race. Race basically gives opportunity to political elitists. And not the disadvantaged class. Thank you.
Hey, anything else on LCAP?
You know, I just wanted to to ask and maybe I can repeat it. I don't know where John is, but if you could let um. Let the public know how they can become an LCAP committee member. Is there a, an email or a form or? And when the next meeting might be?
Thank you. And I'm glad that so many people are going to be willing to join. Uh, on the SRV USD website, there's an LCAP page. And that is managed by Dr. Kemp's office and her assistant Scorsetti. And there's a link there with an email and that email will get you directly to. Ms. Castelluccio, who organizes all the meetings with me. And the next meeting will be in late August, early September. Thank you.
And I just wanted to address one question that came up in public comment because it is agendaized. We can do this. Is. Everything laid out, dollars, what the goals are, how many dollars are allocated to them are are in the document. So you might want to look at the binder. It's all there. I think John's slides were really just super high level and and to draw attention to the goals he wanted to talk about. But everything is spelled out in there. Thanks, John. Okay, now we're on eleven point, we closed the public hearing at seven fifty nine. At the close, you only have to hunt for the beginning. Okay, um eleven point two, public hearing for the proposed two thousand twenty three twenty four district budget. Um, we have a presentation that will be given by Evan Miller and I'm assuming Stella is.
And then tee tee it up for you guys this evening. Good evening trustees and and committee members. Um, I want to start off by us uh just giving a huge shout out to Evan and to the business team, Nicole. To Sandy, to uh accounts payable, accounts receivable, our budget analyst, our payroll specialist, our buyers. Uh, all of those folks are so critical in the closing of the budget and the budget development for the next year. And uh there are the, there are um behind the scenes folks who make sure people are paid, make sure we pay our bills. And so on. So they're really important. And I just wanted to give a big shout out and to Evan for this is, I believe, the first year you have done the budget. On your own, you've led this. Last year there was a transition period. So I want to say well done uh in the process. It is not easy. It is a very complicated process that starts early, like in January, December, January, we're already thinking about. The budget for the next year. Now, before we get into the presentation, if we just go the next slide, before, first I want to say that um a budget is a plan. And at the end of the year, we'll go through the the cycle, the budget cycle. At the end of the year, we see we really. How close were we to this? And you know, it's important for us as a business office to um be as accurate as we can. When we make a budget proposal that when we get to the end of the year in August, when we true up like, okay, how close were we? To the budget. It builds confidence. It builds confidence for the board. It builds confidence with our community, with our labor partners and so on, that our budget is accurate. This year is a little bit different because the state has not yet had its tax filings. Tax filings are in October. The governor and the legislative analyst office are in disagreement about what that's going to look like. They're disagreeing by about eleven billion dollars. Um, we've had a lot of one time money. They're. They're want to claw that back. We don't know. The legislature hasn't approved the budget yet. Generally, at this time of the year, we know a little bit more than what we normally know. I mean, we know more. In a normal year than we know this year. So this is a wonky year. What we do know is this, is that um. We have, we we presented a budget for you guys in the budget workshop that was based on our second interim report. Uh or data that we had in the second interim. We've trued that up. And um and 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 it's and it's not looking as 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 um strong as we had expected. Because there's a lot of cost increase. We've heard from Kaiser twenty percent increase in health insurance on it. Evan will go into those details in just a second. But I want to say I'm here now, so we can, you will hear it twice. You might hear me say it at the end again. Um, so the state's going to adopt their budget at the end of June. Tax filings are in October. There's a disagreement right now. With um with what's happening in in Sacramento. And. One thing that we did not put in the third year out is we didn't count our chickens before they're hatched. We did not put in the renewal of the parcel tax. So we wanted to be really conservative. So the board would see. If the parcel tax renewal doesn't go through what the budget projections look like. And remember, this is a projection. So you know, we're going to find out this time next year, kind of where we sit for this for the twenty three twenty four and so on. So. I'm going to hand it over to Evan, who's going to deliver the news. This is our normal agenda on a budget uh presentation. And um we'll be open to questions at the end. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kemp. Uh good evening trustees, cabinet and public. I'm excited to present our twenty three twenty four adopted budget. At this public hearing. Um, so those arrows, uh. Just a reminder um that this is statutory, both in timing and in format. Um, and we are at the both the adopted budget period and our estimated actuals for the prior year um for comparison. Um, and then a reminder of the timeline, Dr. Kemp went over this really briefly, but you know, in January, the governor gave us his first proposal. Revised it in May. Um, we are at this period now where we are uh have the public hearing for our adopted budget with. Approval next week. Um, all of that has happened without the state actually passing the final budget, right? So the legislature must pass the state budget by the fifteenth and then uh the governor and legislator will adopt it by the thirtieth. Of course, trailer bill language, which is where all the details are, won't come out um until after that. So all of it is. There, there's just a lot of unknowns and I think that's what we kind of wanted to get across. Um, because our revenues are driven by the state and the state's revenues are driven by the economy. Uh, we wanted to do a high level overview of where we are at um. Where the economy is at. And uh again, it's very uncertain. There, there are positive indicators, uh low unemployment, GDP. Rising wages, all seem positive, but there are also a lot of negative indicators. Um inflation continues to stay. Higher than uh policymakers would like. Um interest rates continue to rise, uh the yield curve. So there, there's lots of indicators that also show that there could be a recession coming. Um, reminder that state revenues are highly dependent on our highest earners and our personal income tax receipts are unknown until. Over of this year. So the revenue picture is very unclear. Um, important to note, the governor's may revision does not include a recession, so he is not anticipating a recession. Um, and the legislative analyst's office report that followed. Things that revenues could be as much as eleven billion dollars lower during the budget period than the governor's may revise budget. So all that leads us to say that we think the risk level for uh the governor's may revision is high. Um, there's a lot of risk. Uh, in all of those uh bullet points, um although we will note that there are some available tools. He has substantial. Uh, the state has substantial reserves. They have the possibility of doing deferrals or COLA deficits, raising taxes. So. There are additional levers uh that the state can pull. Um, but it is risky in our opinion budget. Um, so all of that leads to uh the may revise budget. Um, the big number that we'll see is that eight point two two percent. COLA for both LCFF and for categoricals. Um, we see continued investments in the existing priorities of. From the governor over the past few years. So ELOP, TK, universal meals, educator workforce. All of those things continue to be in this budget and funded uh and many of them was with the COLA. Uh, there are new programs introduced. They're pretty limited. The big one that we hear about is three hundred million dollars for the equity multiplier. Um for schools serving high need students. So it does not affect San Ro Valley Unified. We don't have enough of those high need students. Um, the additional LCAP accountability would affect San Ro Valley. So we would have additional LCAP work to do. Um, without getting the additional dollars. Um, and then that revenue problem, without knowing the revenue, uh, there is the clawback of one time dollars. Um, and we went over those a little bit and they're kind of more detail in the report, but the arts musical and. Arts music and structural materials discretionary block grant has been reduced by half and the learning recovery emergency block grant um reduced by a third. Um, so we take all of those budget assumptions from the state budget and we roll them um with our local assumptions. So. Uh, the ones that we want to highlight here are enrollment continues to decline. So we have um projected that we will lose about four hundred fifty students each year. Um, our ADA ratio is lower than it was historically. So uh we are projecting about a ninety five percent ADA ratio. Historically, it was closer to ninety seven percent. Unduplicated uh percentage rises a slight amount over the three year period. Um, and then those statutory COLAs which are published in the uh um by the governor are listed there. All of those rolled together to impact our LCFF revenue. And so we see uh a large increase. Uh in the budget year, about sixteen and a half million dollars in LCFF revenue. But then it flattens out and actually drops slightly in the second year of the production uh within an increase in the third year. Um, and the, we wanted to bring everybody's attention to the second to last row LCFF change over prior year. Uh, we're calling that our declining enrollment COLA. So the impact of the COLA along with declining enrollment and ADA. Um, instead of that eight point two two percent increase, we're only seeing a five point one four percent increase in revenue. Um, as compared to the prior year. Um, other revenues that are in the adopted budget, uh special education revenue is relatively flat. Uh, it is COLA only. We've had. A few years of continued growth in special education uh revenue. Uh, and that is now, we're now in a COLA only environment. So. Um, it's relatively flat. Uh, wanted to highlight that the proposition twenty eight dollars are not budgeted here. The state has not given us any guidance. There's not even a resource code assigned. Um, we don't know how to spend those dollars. So then they're not budgeted at this point. We expect. It will be budgeted by first interim. That's the guidance that we're getting, at least from the county right now. Um, and then again, as Dr. Kemp highlighted, uh the parcel tax um expires in twenty four twenty five. It is not included in our NYPD. Uh for twenty five twenty six. On the expenditure side, uh our assumptions are here, the the big um benefit cost drivers for STIRS and PERS. STIRS after many years of increases is now projected to be flat for the um three year period. PERS after, there were projections earlier this year that they would begin to decline in this upcoming NYPD. Um, due to returns in the stock market, they have changed that. So now PERS is uh projected to increase throughout the NYPD. Um, and then step in column, health and welfare and our CPIs. These are the kind of turn the page. Every year we know these expenditures will increase. Uh by these amounts. Um, we talked about this a little bit in the board workshop, but um as some of those, these are the new expenditures that we see coming into LCFF. Into our unrestricted general fund. Um, so the turn the page were are from the assumptions on the previous slide. The clawback are. The clawback are um, those dollars that we had originally thought we would spend those discretionary block grants to support. Um, so it's instructional materials mostly in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then um, liaisons in twenty-five, twenty-six that we hoped to spend with those block grants. And so as negotiations are settled between this uh, governor and the legislature, we'll see what happens there. Um, but they are currently in the unrestricted general fund. Uh, there are some site department increases in each year, and then um, ongoing dollars that are currently covered by one-time. So COVID relief dollars mostly there. Um, those are primarily one-to-one devices, but also summer school will come back into the unrestricted general fund in twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, elementary counselors will also come back to the unrestricted general fund in twenty-four, twenty-five, and then of all of our um, hopefully, and then that third year, it increases again because uh, that's when the one-to-one devices uh, are spiking. We, that's when we have a big refresh after um, I think five years ago, or five years prior. Those devices are expiring. We bought with COVID dollars. Um, so all of that rolls up into our adopted budget multi-year projection. Uh, this lists all of our revenues and expenditures over the three-year period. Um, I think the things that we want to highlight here, uh, again, we see LCFF revenue flattening out. Um, other local revenue is where we see the parcel tax drop off in the third year. Um, so we we see our revenue decreasing in the second year and then staying relatively flat in the third year. On the expenditure side, um, we're seeing increases. Uh, I think notable in books and supplies. Again, those are our one-to-one devices we're seeing in the third year coming. Um, uh, and the last piece I wanna point out here is transfers in. So in the revenues, the fifth line down. In the third year, we increase our transfers in by three million dollars. Those are dollars that are coming from our Fund Seventeen, which is our special reserve. Uh, in order to meet our minimum, our uh, unrestricted general fund balance, which we'll get into on the next slide. Um, we will be transferring dollars in. If this projection stays true, um, we will be transferring dollars in to be able to meet um, to to stay positive in the unrestricted general fund. So that fund balance is shown here. Um, due to those declines, sorry, I'll go back. The the very bottom line here, and that increased decrease of the fund balance, we'll see uh, declines. That that is, this picture shows a structural deficit that over the three-year period, we will be spending more than we'll be bringing in um, without any changes. Um, so the effect on our fund balance there, we see over the three-year period, we go from a thirty-three million dollar fund balance to a five point five million dollar fund balance. Um, and at the end of that third year, if we look at the components, the bulk of that five point five million dollars is legally restricted. So four point four will it is restricted. And only a little less than five hundred is unrestricted. That's in the assigned line. And then we'll see at the bottom, we keep our reserve for economic uncertainties. That's mandated to be three percent by the state uh, in Fund Seventeen, along with an additional assigned balance. You see that go down um, by three million dollars in the third year. That's the transfer from seventeen over to one. And then we see the corresponding effect on uh, our overall reserves. So Fund Seventeen and then our assigned balances in Fund One and Fund Seven. We'll be going from about an eight percent reserve in the upcoming year to a little over three percent. Um, I think the story that we wanna take from here is that we still will be able to meet all of our um, we will be able to meet everything that we have, we said we can do. We will be using up the bulk of our reserves to do that. But if we continue on the same path without making any changes, this budget, um, I think if we project it out another year, there would be, there would be a problem here. But I think for this three-year period, we are looking okay using up all of our reserves or the bulk of our reserves. Uh, the second piece of budget adoption um, ties back to the LCAP. So I just wanted to give a couple of slides from our LCAP. Uh, these are from the budget over for parents, but um, our our overall revenue, so these tie back to that uh, general fund. And then our expenditures. So a total budget of general fund expenditures of four hundred forty-six million, and then we have thirty-one described in the LCAP. So I felt like this slide does show that we can afford um, the expenditures in the LCAP. Uh, and that is it. Um, so the next steps, uh, we're at the public hearing. We'll come back next week. Um, after any feedback is incorporated into the budget uh, to adopt it. Um, by at the end of the month, Sacramento will adopt the state budget. Um, if there are major changes, we will come back uh, with forty-five day revise, where we will incorporate those changes from the final enacted state budget into this adopted budget that you're adopting tonight, or that we will adopt next week. Um, and then uh, August, October, review all of our actuals. Um, true up our numbers. September will come back with unannated actuals for the prior year. So we'll see what the effect on fund balance is between actual revenues and expenditures. And then in December, we'll have our first real look at where we are with uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the first financial report. Um, and with that, I'll end it up for any questions or Dr. If you wanna wrap up.
Thank you, Evan. I I just wanna say, I know it's um, we have some work we need to do in the next year or so. And we look forward to uh, working with you, the board, with our cabinet, with our community uh, to to bring forward to the to the board a uh, more positive budget as we get into the out years. But there's some work that we have to do.
And if I can just add our thanks from a cabinet perspective to Dr. Kemp and to Evan Miller, because as Stella suggested at the beginning, this is pretty intense work and um, what I appreciate about evidence is this very calm, but very clear. This is what you need to think about. This is what you need to consider. So we appreciate you a lot. And I think it's important for me just to emphasize one piece, and you said it, Evan, very well, but I wanna say it again. We can afford everything that we are legally and contractually expected to do. When the one-time dollars end, if other dollars don't come, we know exactly which decisions we're going to need to make. The process would be that we engage widely, connect with our staff and our union groups, our community and our parents. How should we, if we had to reduce, prioritize what that reduction would look like? It would be a very engaged process led by our business team. We're not there right now, and I'm not gonna provide the sky is falling perspective, because what also challenges our community sometimes is when we're trying to do the crystal ball three years out, sometimes those difficult messages do emerge, sometimes they don't. So what we're flagging is we can afford what we're committed to. We can see us affording what we are contractually and legally expected to do. But some of those extras, if you will, that Sacramento doesn't fund, when we get into that third year, we will have had to engage in a process that involves our community widely, because you make the decision about what the priorities would need to be, so that any budget we brought to you actually was aligned with that direction. But that's not today's conversation, because from our perspective, that would be quite premature. We're aware of it. We understand it. We're thinking about it, but we're not there yet. And so I just wanted to emphasize that last piece, so that you as our board, but also our community understands kind of where we are now, as was shared so effectively, where we might be later and how we would approach the next year. Because we would have to be prepared, because you've learned, and I've learned one big thing. We are making budget decisions and you are approving it without all the information. That's not a criticism. That's just a statement, which means we always have to have contingencies regarding what's gonna come. When are we gonna know? And how does it align with the compliant schedule that you saw on that screen? And those are all additional components that we are dealing with. So thanks again to our team.
So I have a question. Um, so the, well, first of all, I I it it's become apparent that our parcel tax is very important and that we all need to work hard to make sure that we get that renewed. So I hope that our community will support that, because it supports a lot of important, uh, important things, a lot of personnel. And I know that the clawback, they're still debating. The governor and the legislature are gonna have to duke it out. So I'm hoping that the legislature wins out and they don't claw back all that money. But if they do, the things that we're gonna, that we had planned on paying for with them, the instructional materials and things like that, that are important. Where will those, what will happen with that?
It will go into the general fund.
So we will still carry through with
Or we have to make decisions like, for example, technology refresh. We may come up with a different plan for the technology in the classrooms. It, there's a lot of options. So we're gonna look at what other districts are doing, who have one-to-one. Uh, what's that going to, so so there's some planning that goes with it, but you know, curriculum adoptions, I mean, there's different, different pots. There's lottery money and things like that. But you know, generally, it comes from the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving us the, I don't wanna say worst-case scenario, but something that we could actually situation that we could actually find ourselves in, so that we know what we need to do uh, to be able to mitigate some of that. So I I really appreciate all the hard work. I, it's so complex. It, I I really appreciate everything that you've done to give us some clarity.
So I have a quick question, just from a a high-level perspective and not a sky is falling comment. But what it, what it felt like I heard you said was that even with a potentially more rosy perspective that Sacramento is playing out, kind of assuming no recession, assuming all these other sort of things don't trigger and make it a worse situation. Even with that, we're built the, we're, we've built in a structural deficit to our budget.
I'd say, uh, yes, right, right now, without any changes, because of the expiring one-time dollars and that we continue to have those programs that are funded with one-time dollars in the in the budget. So they, as the one-time dollars expire, they move into the unrestricted general fund. There is a deficit there, yes, without any additional dollars coming through and with a relatively, what feels like a, a a risky budget at the state level. Yes.
And that connects to what I was saying, though, because we actually have itemized what doesn't have a funding source.
Yeah.
We know that our technology refresh, as Stella said, does not have a funding source. We know that some of our curriculum refresh does not have a funding source. Some of our staff doesn't have a funding source. But when I said that we are able to cover our contractual and legal obligations, that's why it would be a structural deficit in the year out if we didn't make the changes. But we're already preparing to, as I shared, speak about those changes. So in other words, we're not gonna be in a structural deficit. We were in one before, unless you tell us to be. I would argue that we shouldn't be in a structural deficit. We wouldn't bring you a budget uh, with a structural deficit. You always could um, use your authority to ask us to do something different, and we would actually rectify that before it got there. So it would be a structural deficit, as as Evan said, without the change, but it's not a structural deficit at the moment.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong here? Because we had so much one-time money, even a year ago, we were technically in a structural deficit, because we were funding permanent-like things with one-time money, with the plan that we need these right now, our kids need these right now. And we'll figure out how we're gonna pay for them ongoing, or we'll discontinue on them, because some of them had to do with building capacity. And maybe once you've built the capacity, you don't need the ongoing piece of it. I think a piece of that is we're finding it very valuable and maybe we're changing our course. But your point is really well taken. We're, we, we don't have to panic yet. And the fact that you're watching all of it and and you know what's funded with one time and what might go away and what what's in jeopardy. But maybe that's more important than that. You're you're working on all that. It's not like we're gonna get to December and go, holy crap, what are we gonna do? So um,
Right. And technically, yes, like what you said, is it's because we were using restricted dollars. And when you get the letter from the county, you know, that talks about our second interim budget review, and we noticed that there is a deficit spending. Well, it's restricted dollars that we're spending down. So it's kind of just a nuance in in how you look at budgets.
Yeah, and it's it's not just kicking the can down the road and thinking about it later, but it's it's using, and and we've been through other times over the decades where there was lots of one-time money and very little increase in in ongoing money. And this is how you have to deal with it when you live in California, and this is the way they give you the money. Um, if I can, can I ask a question? If you could kind of put into context for us how Fund Seventeen supports, helps when it comes to these reserve numbers?
Um, so Fund Seventeen has been there, I think, for many years. I I I wasn't here, and so I don't know when it was originally created and the the intent behind it. But we have used it since I have been here as a reserve for economic uncertainty. Um, so that's the required three percent. So in most districts, it is, that's what it is. It's your savings account. Um, and so that's how we've used it here. And so we need the three percent. There's an additional assignment that sits on top of that um, that we have designated for declining enrollment. So as we know, the students will fall, we'll have fewer dollars. We can have, we can know we have something in our back pocket to address that.
So we've used that to manage some of the known levers that are in the not-happy direction. Um, but it's it's how we've been planning for all of that for a number of years, and it's it's the built-in cushion.
It's it's, yeah, it's there, and now it's being used in this in this projection.
Excellent.
I have a, a question about the the risk with the state revenue. Um, and just to make sure that there's clarity around that. So um, if, when tax revenue is, comes in in October, if it is lower than what they're assuming, are we still as an, as a educational jurisdiction, are we still guaranteed what they approve in, I guess it's in June, or can that number change based on what the tax revenue actually is in October?
I'm gonna take a stab at it, and I wanna see whether Evan has anything at, but um, so when this revenues come in below projection, there are different kinds of mechanisms that they use at the state level to be able to balance the book, so to speak. And one of those actions is either, they can either defer payments, which they did those back in like two thousand eight, nine, ten. Remember, they were deferring payments. And it's Contra Costa County that actually is, hmm, it it doesn't affect us, because they they already fund us based on anticipated revenue. So we're, you know, we we don't receive the money like every quarter, but we receive it like ongoing from the county. The second thing is, is that the the governor could dip into rainy day funds. So that's also a possibility. Uh, there's just some political landscape around the, how the community sees or how the, you know, the political, the political scene sees them dipping into a rainy day fund. So those are kind of the two, the two things that they might do. They might decide to cut some programs. I was, you know, the governor wants to do this equity multiplier, which is um, pretty significant for some school districts that have higher percentage of of uh, students uh, who meet the the threshold for the supplemental concentration funding. And um, and 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 that's really kind of one of those things that that he might end up, they might end up negotiating out some of these new programs. Um, I think that uh, it's all up in the air, but he does have some strategies that he could use in order to do that. And and when I was in Southern California, they did the deferral method, and it did affect our school district, because we didn't have this uh, funding on anticipated revenue from our county. And uh, it was challenging. We had to go out for trans in that particular school district. Did I get that right?
Uh, I think you, I think you did. Yeah, I I think the the main tool that we have seen them use mid-year is deferrals, right? Um, when COVID hit, they immediately deferred payments to the next year. Um, and and they did it in during the crisis, housing crisis, and so I think that's the main tool. I think once they enact the state budget, I think they, whatever COLA they decide on, whether it's a statutory COLA or a deficit COLA, they are then obligated to fund. The question is whether the dollars would come in this year or in the following year.
A quick question about Prop twenty-eight. So there was a slide up there that we were talking about. Prop twenty-eight potential, would this a potential or proposed fifty percent? All right, let's see. Maybe I'm making up the fifty percent.
Yeah, so the the fifty percent reduction isn't, it it's confusing, because there are two pots of money for arts. There's the arts and music instructional material block grant that was part of last year's um, the one-time dollars are last year's budget, and then
Now it's part of the clawback.
Yes, re- remember, we brought a proposal to you about the uh, um, it was in January, I believe, January of twenty-three, we brought a proposal of the arts instructional materials discretionary block grant, which was separate from Prop twenty-eight.
Got it. And so what? Portion of our arts and music education is funded by those. Two. Items.
So the block grant does not fund um, arts or music.
Okay.
It. Will fund instructional materials, hopefully if those dollars come through. Um, the prop twenty-eight dollars will be additional. They were just approved by the voters at the last election. Um. The problem with them is just there's no guidance around how to spend.
And I think.
Is being funded just through the general fund through the normal allocations.
Okay. I think the confusing part is that grant that is being reduced by fifty percent. Had a real long title on it that ended with discretion. And because it started with arts and music, everybody thought it was the arts fund. The trouble is, is that because of issues like um, benefits or like pensions. Everyone that I know in every district I connect with was using the discretion part. So our concern is when the fifty percent reduction came and we had earmarked paying for some of our, our really significant costs. For a period of time, just to give us a little bit of a break. That's our challenge, but we never used that nor intended to use that for arts.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, we had in here, we had um, one-time, one-time um, salary per sester's increases for. Two years, um, the one-time longevity increase. And some instructional materials, many that we were going to use if they continue to fund it. Uh, some vehicle replacements. And then we held back six point four million dollars. Because we thought that this might happen.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? We do have two cards, one card, two cards. Do we hear a card? By one's a country? Yeah, I have it right here. On my way to, come on up. Yep. I thought I had two cards, but I only have one card and it's yours.
All right. So I want to share um, a phrase uh, that I learned when I was growing up in Taiwan with you and. It really um, is very depictive of this um, scenario, this landscape that we're going through financially. It's a. Chowfu na wei wu mi chui. What that means is a skilled wife who is really good in culinary art. Cannot cook anything good without rice. And this is what's going on. We have the best staff, we have best everything and we have no money. And that is all because we have morons in Sacramento. And um, that is really outside of my control. However, I know that. Judging from what I have been observing at the federal level. House Speaker Kevin McCarthy had told us at the federal level, our tax income is healthy. We are paying what we are paying more than ever before. It is our spending that is. Outpacing the revenue that is coming in already more than before. We have to be self. Control um, in everything that we intend to spend. Um, of course, I'm talking to those morons in Sacramento. Um, so tho- they are out of my control and I hope that everyone who's listening to me will please vote them out. We really need to have. Two-party system so we can have budget restraint and responsible spending or very quickly in three years, we just heard. From Mr. Miller, we will become the poorest state of the union and it is going to be extremely embarrassing. Um, you know, not to say I would feel extremely shameful. Um. What I can control as a taxpayer, I am committed. To pay you if you would submit renewal of parcel taxes. That is me as a human being with commitment to everyone who deserves a decent K through twelve. Public education. I will do my best to satisfy that need. Why? Because I'm already paying for it. It is not additionally burdensome. That is something that I feel I can afford. All I'm asking you is. Please, you need to get that message to the classroom unless some rich spoiled brats. That are in our system who harassed me on Memorial Day night that they don't pay for all the education I do and. Norty Valley High School is my high school. San Ramo, San Ramon Valley High School is my high school. Cal High is my high school. Why? Because I pay for them. You don't. Have the right to harass me. So. With that s- um, said. I would really like the business um, office. To see if you can possibly put together a community and a staff committee together. And streamline for three years. We're looking forward. This is working towards three years later when we have um, depleted our reserve. What are we going to do? You need to start looking at what can be streamlined and you know, what is ahead. So I'm asking you to please. Uh, look ahead by uh, forming a committee that will review spending. Thank you.
Anything else on our budget? Public hearing. Okay, I'm going to close it at eight thirty-six. Six. Okay. Our next item is eleven point three and the board will take action to seat student board member. Or the student board member for the next school year. And I'm very pleased to say that we went through a very rigorous process. Had amazing students go through, had amazing students as our finalists, both Laura and I and Dr. Malloy. And. Hong, Dr. Wen, were, were there for the um, the interviews there. And we're so pleased to welcome Anya Iapen back for a second year as our student board member. Board member. And I'd also like to add that we're going to work on additional opportunities for the other finalists to be involved. Uh, if they wish to, because every single one of them was, was great. Anya, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve a second term. My throw is a little bit um, scratchy, so sorry for that. Um, but this year I was, I was uh, speaking a little about, a little bit about this earlier, but it's been amazing. Um, and I'm really hoping that see more students involved directly in the district's, district's decision-making processes. Um, I've worked with so many amazing student leaders. I don't want to just be. Simply a liaison, but also someone who's able to connect students directly to the administrators who are making those decisions so they can hear directly from them. And I hope. In my role, I'm also able to hear more from students. You know, we don't typically hear from for a variety of reasons. Um, but really um, reaching out to them, making that extra effort. Um. And you know, we've, I've, I've talked about this with site visits, um, you know, virtual meetings. I'm really hoping that students. Know more about what the district's doing because there is that disconnect, but there's so much important work that's being done. And I really, really hope to see that bridge kind of divided. Um, and really see the communities, both students, teachers, administrators. Working together to really put um, forth the best ideas, see tangible actions um, made and for students to realize. Uh, kind of the progress that the district wants to see. So they're able to see that reflected in their own classrooms, feel inspired to see that their voice can really make change. Um, and want to be more involved, to want to share their experience and perspective. That's really my hope. Um, so thank you so much. I've enjoyed my past term and I'm really excited to keep serving with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
We're so happy to have you back, that you're coming back because I think that you've gained a lot of momentum. Uh, in your role um, in connecting with other students and the student senate and all of that. And I think that momentum will carry us through. Next year and there'll be even more that we could learn. So thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Yeah, great job. I'm excited to have you back next year and oftentimes when you're speaking, I just go, wow, I was never that articulate when I was your age. And um, that's really special as you're passionate about things. I love how uh, you bring the voice of the students here to us and you do a really good job and you're diligent at that. And I'm sure. You have a lot of other things that are also going on in your life. So thank you for serving our schools, our community and your peers in that way.
Let's say yay. Yeah, no, um, it's a. No, I mean, this last year you've shown us um, all the wisdom and uh, effort and work. Uh, that you put forth, you know, with, with all the student groups. Yeah, and you could bring, you know, their voices to uh, the days. But um, I think um, actually that you, you know. As your second year, one, thank you for actually stepping up for the second year. Uh, of, of service too, but I think that'll. Be great to have you um, now that you're kind of used to. You know, that, that, that whole process and stuff of. Bringing again um, uplifting student voices. Uh, you'll do even greater, greater things for us this year.
Yeah, and I just want to say congratulations too and um, and I'm. Excited for the opportunity of continuity, you know, taking the things that um, that you've experienced and learned in this first year and really. Amplifying it farther. And I think it'll be an interesting case study for us too, to see a board member that's um, that's been for two terms. Um, and then I also just want to say to everyone that applied, you know, I have the opportunity to see. The students that, that presented at the student senate and they were all. Amazing. I mean, I was taking notes about all the ideas and you know, it was just so wonderful and they were so well spoken and, and so thoughtful in their ideas and passionate about. Um, about the change that they wanted to make, you know, as a representative of the, the students. Um, and then also the five who interviewed. Um, again, it will, we spent some time, you know, I mean. It, it, everyone just brought so much and it was so wonderful. And I think a big takeaway. Which Rachel mentioned was really providing opportunities, leadership opportunities for everyone that wants them. And um, and, and giving them the opportunity to be able to take that passion and that and, and, and bring it towards, whether it's a steering committee or. Um, student senate or a school site leadership opportunity. But I think it. The one thing that it showed and, and again, that I'm so grateful for is just the students that. Are in our district, you know, there's, there, it's, we have some, all of our students are amazing and, and we got to see. A handful of them and, and see them shine. And so, and I'm just excited and I'm really excited for you and what we can do this year, this next year. So, thank you.
All right. So I think it's an action item. So we actually need a motion. Oh, I don't have a card for that one.
Welcome back. I'm so happy for you. So I just want to um, you know, uh, basically say that uh, from my. Observation uh, by going to different meetings, especially in city of San Ramon. Um, our team leaders seem to be really blossoming because of uh, people like you are doing great and everyone wants to be like you. So for teen um, councils in San Ramon, we had uh, close to, I believe seventy-five. People who applied and I know that you came from there. And so it was definitely a great training ground. And here you are one out of five, which is wonderful. Um, but I was thinking because I think you are becoming a senior. This coming year, right? So I think it would be great if it's possible that we can possibly pull from the other four and have like an understudy. Uh, of sort. So then like if you do get too busy or you know, for some reason that you cannot complete your term. Um, like, you know, I know that coming from San Ramon, you had two years' term and then you sort of left early to come to this position. So if that should happen again, then we have an understudy who has been coming on a regular basis and they're aware of what's going on. So mostly I think for your age, it is the terminology is like. L caps and you know, different things that you really can't comprehend un- unless you come to this regularly. And then lastly, I want to ask all the teenage boys and girls. Don't you guys want to apply to be like me? You can be like me anytime, just doesn't mean that, you know, you're not sitting up there, doesn't mean that you cannot participate. Please, we are a democracy. Democracy comes from this position first. These people. Are basically their authority. Actually, I would say that I am. In a bigger position than all of you because you cannot be there without me voting you in or other people, right, voting you in. So really, please, um, you know, don't be afraid to be here if you cannot be there. Thank you so much for your service again, and um, I really appreciate your, you know, commitment and uh, service. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, I should probably read the thing. To, to take action to seat student board member for twenty-three twenty. Second.
The motion was made by board member Brat and seconded by board member Ordway. Roll call vote, student board member Iapen.
Sure. Oh. Hi.
Board member Vancy.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Board member Brat.
Aye.
Board member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
One of the first things they teach you that if you're not going to vote for yourself, then nobody else should, right?
Yeah, we, we all vote first.
All right. Item eleven point four, consideration of approval, declaration of need of fully qualified educators.
Melanie Jo.
Yes, thank you, uh, trustee Hurd. So uh, state law requires that we submit to you um, and request your approval for the um. Declara- declaration of need for fully qualified educators. And this provides the district the ability to. Uh, work with and support uh, teachers that are still working on obtaining their credentials. And this is most critically important um, now, especially during the teacher shortage. And this is something that you've probably remember seeing before. We do this on an annual basis. And it just provides that flexibility for us to utilize emergency credentials when necessary. So we're asking that you um, approve our um, recommendation of the attached declaration of need um, so that we can move forward with this commission on teacher credentialing.
I like the motion.
Thank you, Suzanne.
To approve um, declaration of need for fully qualified educators.
I second.
The motion was made by board member Ordway and seconded by board member Clark. Roll call vote, student board member Iapen.
Aye.
Board member Vancy.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Board member Brat.
Aye.
Board member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Okay, then item eleven point five is consideration of approval of the memo of understanding between the Measure J Traffic Congestion Relief Agency, also known as TRAFTICS. In San Ramon Valley Unified School District regarding the expectations and responsibilities associated with the implementation. Of the TRAFTICS Student Transportation Service. This MOU has existed since the beginning of the program. It just gets renewed each year. Um, and we're just, we're complete list, bringing it forward to our board to, to, to approve before I would sign it as president. Any questions on it? Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the um, the TRAFTICS J. Do I need to read the whole thing?
No, just, just say the TRAFTICS memo of understanding.
TRAFTICS memo of understanding.
I'll second.
The motion was made by board member Brat and seconded by board member Clark. Roll call vote, student board member Iapen.
Aye.
Board member Vancy.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Board member Brat.
Aye.
Board member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Okay, now we have eleven point six, consideration of approval of the employee contract for assistant superintendent of human resources and. Dr. Kemp's going to take this one.
Well, Melanie cannot negotiate her own contract, so I'm acting as her agent. As the agent for the superintendent on this. So as you know, in um, two thousand thirteen, AB thirteen forty-four. City of Bell situation that occurred there required. Basically put changes in place in the government code re- um, concerning employment contracts. For um, local public agency executives. And it requires um, new notices for open meetings. Uh, you know, you can't do this in a closed meeting and it has penalties for misuse of the public office. Which includes impacting K twelve public agencies like the school district. So. In the board packet, you have the attached contract, employment contract for assistant superintendent of human resources. And I want to review what the terms of those contract. Contract are. So uh, the contract is for the term of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. With a annual extension pending positive evaluation. Uh, salary is step one, which is of the management tier. For salary schedule two fifty-five, six forty-two. And it does not include health and welfare benefits and statutory cost. That is my report on her contract.
And you just meant that that figure that you quoted don't, doesn't include those things, right?
That's correct.
Contract does include those things, correct?
Her contract includes that, but her salary is not, it's not in her salary. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Board members, do you, we have a motion first or do you want to discuss first?
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve um, employment contract for assistant superintendent human resources.
I will second. The motion was made by board member Ordway and seconded by board member Brat. Roll call vote, student board member.
Just a second, Sydney. Just want to make sure there wasn't any discussion. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Student board member Iapen.
Uh. Aye.
Board member Vancy.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Board member Brat.
Aye.
Board member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
Yay, first one. Okay, eleven point seven is consideration of approval. Okay, eleven point seven is consideration of approval of addenda to employee agreements for contracted management employees applying a one-year extension. And Melanie Jones is gonna lead this one.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. So we are requesting your consideration of approval of the addendum to the superintendent's employment agreement. Um the attached addendum would extend the employment contract from July one of twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Provided this contract is extended, the superintendent shall be eligible for a five percent longevity step increment on July one of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I think it's a
Am I on the wrong one? Oh, I apologize.
Actually, I think they're misnumbered.
Yeah.
I get there.
That gets different.
Yeah.
Oh. So which should we go by? What's in the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Eleven point seven is um the extensions for Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, my apologies. Somehow I mixed that up. All right, let's start again. No worries, no worries. So for uh for this next item, the current employment agreements of the Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations and the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services will expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So in order to maintain consistency and stability in district leadership and in the major operations which these managers lead and oversee, staff requests approval of the attached addenda to those employment agreements will extend the term of e- of each contract by one calendar year.
Thank you. Hey, may we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendum.
Addendum?
Addendum.
Amendum.
Second.
Thank you.
The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call vote, Student Board Member Iapen.
Aye.
Board Member Vancy.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, and now we're on eleven point eight, which is consideration of approval of addenda to employment agreement for superintendent applying a salary adjustment and a one-year extension. And this is also for Melanie and there is a small revision on here that was
All right, let's try this again. So we are requesting your consideration of approval of the addendum to the superintendent's employment agreement. The attached addendum would extend the employment contract from July one of twenty twenty-three through June, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Provided this contract is extended, the superintendent shall be eligible for a five percent longevity step increment on July one of twenty twenty-three. The annual salary for the superintendent with the five percent longevity step increment will be four hundred and three thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. All of the other provisions of the existing superintendent's contract would remain unchanged. And the general fund cost associated with the addendum is nineteen thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
All right. I have a, I have a comment to make on this. So and this is an elaborate comment because I want to be really clear with what I'm saying. Um so I've been on the board for six short months, but in that time I've gotten to work with John Malloy uh very closely, going to school sites, um working with him here at different uh you various functions within the district. And I've been very impressed by his positive leadership qualities and that he exhibits with students and with staff alike and it's great seeing him, especially interacting with the students. He's very natural at it and he's very caring and and kind and clear for our s- our staff as well too. Um and so I really appreciate all those things about you. And then also we've heard some voices from the community, different stakeholders, various groups about examining the contracts that we do have in place, specifically examining and having discussions about me too. And these are not things that Dr. Malloy asked for. These are things he was, he was told when he came on board. This is, this is what you're gonna get. So I want that to be very clear to the community too, as I, as I make this comment. Um but we're in the, we're in the process um as a board of of starting to have these conversations and having open and thoughtful dialogue. And I truly mean dialogue, back and forth on what that looks like. Do we keep it the same? Do we evolve it? Do we make it look like something else? And so my preference is to let that process play out, which I would imagine would take, you know, probably the process in summer, you know, a couple, a couple months. And then have this vote after we have that discussion. We don't know if there's gonna be changes or if we're gonna agree on something new or different or the same. But I would like to let that process play out first before we extend it to twenty twenty-six. And I I do feel like we've got a little bit of time to do that um because the contract is already out to the middle of June uh thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um otherwise, I would be current concerned about showing, hey, yep, we want, we want you here for this longevity. But my preference is to do that after we have that uh thoughtful conversation play out. So I just thought I'd put that out there.
So we are in the process of looking at all these different things and it, as Jesse so eloquently said, uh Dr. Malloy is an amazing leader and I wouldn't want to be working with anybody else. But because um just because we've done something the same way for many years, doesn't mean that we should continue to do the same thing. And so while I I really have struggled with this myself, um and I I hear Jesse's point about um about wanting to have uh the discussions and and have all the information and maybe have a a direction. And maybe it would be the same. I don't know, but we haven't had a chance to do that yet. Um that being said, uh it's important to me that we have continuity and that we continue with the leadership, the great leadership that we have. Um and I so value that and I don't want to jeopardize that. Uh so I would I would make a motion to go ahead and approve this and um we will continue with our with looking into our contracts and how we, if there's changes that we want to make in the future. It's just been a really hard decision.
So Shelley, that was a motion to extend the contract as recommended in the staff report, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second because I think that um I agreed, but you know, we shouldn't do things, you know, just because we've always done them. We should take a look. But I think it wouldn't be unfair at this time uh to bring, you know, something that's so different. And I think that uh there's a couple of things in a contract that um, you know, tied together that that it's a contract. We need to, we need to fulfill our contracts. So um I like to second that.
Yeah, and I, and I'd just like to say that I think that while I think that it is important for us to s- disrupt past practices that maybe don't always you know, we don't really have a full understanding of, I think it's also important for this action item to show that we are um, we are approving John as superinten- Dr. Malloy as superintendent for an extended year and the contract disruption that we're talking about is, it feels to me that it's it's almost a separate piece, even though I know this is part of it, if that makes sense. I know that's not for some reason, my brain just is off tonight. But anyway, um I voting yes on this is me voting yes to Dr. Malloy. And and that's something that I feel very, very, very strongly about, so.
And I don't think I need to to clarify my position because I feel like I've I've been clear and I know I've only been here for a certain period of time. And I come from a um and not to say that we all don't, but I come from a a very business-centric um orientation and I know the educational uh world is different than that. And yet, from my point of view, I like having clarity on having these discussions before I extend contracts going from twenty-four months out to thirty-six months out. If I, if it was closer, I would feel more pressure on that sort of thing. So that is why I have that that standpoint of when you're going into those those discussions, I feel best to have that discussion before we extend for that sort of thing. Nothing about Dr. Malloy. As I've said, I getting to know him, getting to see him work, um it's been a pleasure, it's been a joy. He uh engages with a very wide variety of um of thoughts and of persuasions within our community. And and I think he's also a very uh quick communicator too. He doesn't leave people hanging. He responds to it. It's all sorts of amazing things. So this is completely separate from Dr. John Malloy, the person. And this is a perspective that I take when, when I do negotiations. That probably feels weird. I do not intend that to feel weird. But that is how I approach these things. And it's not about Dr. Malloy, it's about that position of superintendent.
Okay, any other comments? Can I call for the question?
The motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call vote, Student Board Member Iapen.
Aye.
Board Member Vancy.
No.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
The motion passes four one.
Okay, so that gets us through all the action. We've already done consent. We are now at Administrative Matters and Board Member Reports. So Anya, you already went, but do you have anything else? Okay, you're good. Jesse, would you like to go first? Shall we just go down the line?
Yeah. Oh, let me turn this back on. I'll keep it quick. But the big highlight of probably what a lot of us experienced were the promotions and the graduations. Um it was just a really pleasurable experience to be able to interact with all those kids, shake half of their hands. I know by the time that I was done with the San Ramon Valley graduation, my hand actually hurt, but my face had kind of a permanent smile on it because you just can't help but smile at all these kids who are graduating, adults that are graduating, and you can just see them um excited about what's coming next. And i- it was quite long ago that I was in that same spot, but it just doesn't really feel that long ago because that's such a a momentous occasion. Um and uh it was just really great to see that. Probably the biggest shocker were all the eighth grade boys who are about six inches taller than me. And I'm like, where where's the genetic pool coming from here? Um anyways, what a pleasure. Thank you, everybody, for letting us participate in that. And um yeah. Anyways, that's my piece.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Um definitely agree with Jesse about uh the promotion and graduation. I had the uh pleasure of attending um promotion at Iron Forest Middle School and it was really special because I actually had a couple of students promoting, came up to shake my hand, said, hey, I remember you as my art teacher. So uh that was really, really special. And um and then a very intimate um moving, I think, uh graduation adventure in Del Amigo because of those students who took a different path. And they found their own success, right, in their time, in their way. So uh it wa- it was great. Uh I just also want to um show my appreciation to actually City of San Ramon on uh um actually uh um adding to their Memorial Day program this year on um any community members who um want to dedicate uh memorial flag to a fallen or or um a deceased um uh veteran. And um my husband and I was able to dedicate um a flag um to um um my father-in-law, stepfather-in-law, who who passed away in October, uh last October, and he was in uh served in the Navy. So uh thank you for City of San Ramon for that. Um seems like a long time ago, but uh we had the Council of PTA uh recognition breakfast. It was really great. It's always a happy occasion because we get to um honor and recognize students who receive scholarship from um the the PTAs. And also um thank our parent volunteers at each and all of our school sites. So um it it was a great, great breakfast. Thank you, PTA, uh Council PTAs. And then uh lastly, I just want to thank the parents and community member who came to my office hours, had great conversations, and I really appreciate you um hearing from about your concerns, but also the kudos uh for our school district. Thanks.
So definitely graduations and promotions are the highlight of the year. I was at Montavista, Pine Valley, and Diablo Vista. I got to say uh sweet goodbye to uh Becky Ingram, who's retiring. I really love her. And so that was really, really great. Uh I also attended Civics Day at Cal High and saw all the great projects from some of our students um choosing an issue or a problem and then finding solutions. So innovative and it was really a great program. Um I did a couple of uh, I'm on the Access to Excellence Committee and I did a couple of an ambassador presentations. Uh basically talking about our school district, what we're doing, where we're headed, what we need, that kind of thing. And got some, I went to the Kiwanis and to the Rotary Club and really got some very thoughtful questions. People are really interested and they're very surprised about our achievements, number one, and our low funding, number two. Like the look on their faces is like, what? They they don't get the, the two don't go together. But I found out from the Kiwanis that the Fourth of July Parade in Danville is gonna be dedicated to educators and our own Siobanta Eddington is going to be the grand marshal. So that's really, really great. And I I didn't even know about it till I made that presentation. As Susanna said, we we had the PTA recognition breakfast and I just want to thank all of our PTA volunteers everywhere. You're amazing. You make this school district run and I just really, really appreciate it. I used to be one of those. Um I also just will close with, I've just really appreciated so, so much the opportunity to spend time with our students. In the last month, I've been, you know, at the Student Senate, the Black Student Union, the Ethnic Studies Group, the uh Capstone Projects at Montavista. It's just been, it's just really, really valuable to me as a board member to have those opportunities. So I want to thank Dr. Malloy and the staff for expanding that. And I hope next year we can do even more. I just love being with these kids. So, thank you.
So I too got to do promotions and graduations. So I was at Windermere and Charlotte Wood for eighth grade promotion and I was at Cal Go Grizzlies. Um for graduation, my own daughter graduated and it was a graduation where I got to hug a lot of kids and had that permagrin. And um I just want to say congratulations to every student, whether you graduated, you promoted, or you finished second grade. Um you guys deserve a vacation and a rest and we just really appreciate all of the engagement that you had every day during the school year. So take a break. Um and then we had a CAC meeting and we have, I don't know if it's official yet or if that vote was made, but a student, potential student um member of the CAC, which is
On the consent agenda.
Oh, oh. Um so anyways, that's very exciting. Um they were just an amazing um student with a really authentic voice and really willing to speak up at the meeting, which was wonderful to see and and really enlightening, um which is extremely valuable. Um we had a TRAFTICS meeting. And um and then I also was able to go to a ceremony um over at the the Veterans um Hall, I believe it's called, at in Danville for our um our graduates who are um enlisting in military service. Um or and or are um have been appointed to academies and uh it was really wonderful to see the parents were involved and and challenge coins were handed over and there were oaths and and I just want to again congratulate those students because, I mean, that's, they're, they're doing what um what needs to, needs to be done for our country and I really appreciate that commitment. Um so I want to thank them. And then lastly, Pride Festival, I know that um Alisa, the the PFLAG president, had spoke about that. That's on June fifteenth, which is a Thursday. It's from four thirty to eight thirty. It's um a whole four-hour festival with music and speakers and um all kinds of stuff. So if you can come, stop by and support our families, that would be amazing. It's gonna be a really fun, fun evening. So, thank you.
I thoroughly enjoyed my graduation and promotion ceremonies as well. I got to go to Los Saros the first day and then Gale Ranch and then Christine joined me with uh Doherty Valley on Friday. Huge class, I think it was eight hundred and forty-two students. You know, we hear so much from all of our high school students about and from Anya about the the stress and and the, you know, just everything that that they go through and the everything we're doing, our strategic directions for for them. But the, the feeling at the Doherty Valley graduation ceremony was just But the, the feeling at the Doherty Valley graduation ceremony was just amazing. I mean, just. For starters, just like the, the awesomeness of the presence you're in, the size of it, the, the, how excited the fans are. And then the students themselves, the two speakers were just, they blew me away focusing on the social emotional side. And the paying attention to the people in your life because that's what really matters and it was just such great messaging. And then the second student, just, she got up there and she was just so real. I wanted to just hug her. So just, I just wanna say that Doherty Valley gets a vibe about being just an intense pressure cooker. But they sure knew how to have a good time at graduation and it was just so supportive and uplifting and um. You know, different than what everybody thinks their vibe is. And so next year, it'll be you walking across that stage. Um I also wanted to add some, some other things in addition to the PTA recognition breakfast and the CAC meeting and T-R-A-F-I-C-K-S meeting, all these other things. I went to CSBA's Delegate Assembly, we, um the weekend of May twentieth and twenty-first. There really wasn't anything major to report, but just that it's going well and it, it's, it's good to hang out with other trustees from other school districts. And just the chatter about what's going on in their district. It's kind of grounds you to that, you know, we're not this unique unicorn place with. Some of the challenges we have, everybody else is having the same kind of challenges and um really nice interaction among trustees. Um the um AEC registration for housing is now open. I'm guessing with it being in San Francisco this year, that we probably will, if we're attending, will be barding back and forth. So we probably don't need to worry about the housing, but if you're planning on staying, talk to Cindy about getting a, a reservation there. And there was some discussion about maybe including our student board member since it's local, so hopefully we can visit that. Um I think that's everything we had. All right, we do have to retreat back to closed session to deal with evaluation. And we won't come back to close publicly. So with that.